B 2024-10-01 involving 397 Rock Beach Road has been adjourned at the applicant's request to the, this is November already, I guess it would be the December meeting then. So if anyone's here with respect to that application, I'll let you know at this point so you don't have to stick around and spend the evening waiting to find out. All right. Having said that, now arriving at the hour of seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. If everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Few housekeeping matters to get underway before we actually get into the agenda. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Before we begin, please be aware of the fire exits which are located to your left. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion, going down the stairs at the north or south end of the building. Do not use the elevator. Meeting minutes are being taken by our secretary for the purpose of a record in minutes, not a verbatim transcript. In order to help her keep the minutes straight, when you come to the podium, please identify yourselves and speak clearly into the mic, speak into the microphone. When you come to the podium, please state your name and your address. As I said, this is not a verbatim record, only to indicate the sum and substance of the proceedings, but it's important that we attribute the comments and views to the correct people. This meeting is being recorded by the ICAT department, broadcast on Spectrum Channel 1303. I also understand that you can watch the meeting on some Facebook page, and of course, eventually the recordings are placed on the town website and you'll be able to watch them there. We follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda next to the door to your left. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative should come to the podium, state their name and their address, pause, raise their right hand to be sworn, and then present their case. During the presentation of the case, the zoning board, members of the board will have an opportunity to engage in discussion or ask questions of the applicant. And when that process is completed, then we'll open the case up to public input. Anyone who wishes to speak to the board regarding the application should come to the podium, identify themselves, provide their address, and direct any and all comments to the board, not to the applicant or their representative. There are three categories of public input that we've identified. The first is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. The next is those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. The third is that those who are neither for nor against the particular application, but have some questions or wish to provide comments or have discussion concerning some aspect of the application. Once everyone has been heard who wishes to speak during the public input portion, the applicant or their representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any comments or concerns that were raised during the public input. And at that point, then the case will be closed and we will move on to the next case on the agenda. Once all the cases have been heard, the board will take a recess. And following the recess, we will come back and deliberate on all of the cases on the agenda. During this portion of the meeting, there is no further input from the public unless it is specifically requested by the board. You do not have to stay for that deliberation portion to learn the outcome of the case. You can race home and catch it on TV, Facebook, whatever. You can also call the planning and zoning department tomorrow morning after nine o'clock and they'll glad, be glad to tell you what we decided with respect to the case that you're interested in. When we take up the deliberation of cases, we take them up also in the order in which they appear on the agenda, but for whom the applicant or their representative is also present. So if the first applicant has left, we would, and the second applicant is present, we would deliberate on the second case first. And then when we complete all the cases for which the applicants or their representative remain, we would then go back to the top, take the first case and the cases after that for which the applicant or their representative are no longer present. So I believe that concludes the opening remarks, so if we could call the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First case on the agenda is case number P, excuse me, ZB 2024-09-03. McMahon Leroux Associates acting as agent for 43 North Real Estate is seeking area variances to allow for a reduced side setback of zero feet and reduced off-street parking for the redevelopment of an existing building into 22 apartments and 6,000 square feet of commercial space on premises 4530 St. Paul Boulevard, otherwise known as 41 Colebrook Drive in an R1 residential district.
And Chairman, a quick note before we get started on this application. We received revised site plans from the applicant as well as a letter from the applicant that seems to suggest that the commercial area has been increased from 6,000 square feet to 6,200 square feet, and the number of apartments has been reduced from 21 to 20, making the respective parking requirements for the commercial area 28 parking spaces and the required parking for the apartments 40 spaces on Lot 2. As proposed, the applicant states that there will be 65 onsite parking spaces on Lot 2 with an additional three spaces on the lot secured through an easement with the Diocese of Rochester and St. Cattery. We read that as stating that 65 plus three additional parking spaces would satisfy the minimum of 68 parking spaces that are required on this lot 2. So it looks like that the parking on that lot is in compliance with the code. Still ultimately up to the applicant to demonstrate that tonight, but just wanted to give you all that context.
And when was that received?
It was received by the town, the letter on October 25th.
All right, I don't recall seeing that.
It was received on October 25th around 3:30 in the afternoon after I had left and I had just gotten back from vacation, so that...
It's very frustrating to have things presented at the last minute. Now there's changes to what you're asking us to approve. Is that right?
The 25th was the date for the support that was requested, so I did physically drop them off and copies of 12 on the 25th. I thought that was the due date that you stated at our last meeting.
It was. However, nobody, at 3:30 on the last date, I guess what I've got to do is set, when I'm setting dates, is set a date for the applicant and then set a date for those who wish to oppose. Because people who want to have input with respect to this now don't have it because the last minute it was submitted, which is my fault. I should have anticipated that. And we'll make sure that we do that in the future, that we have a gap of at least a week between dates for submissions between applicants and those who wish to respond. Okay? So keep that in mind if I forget. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so proceed.
Yes, to start that...
Well, you need to, I started before you identified yourself.
Joel Barrett of Fairhaven Road in Rochester, New York. And I...
Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
There was some confusion last time when we presented as to what was approved within our use variance, but our use variance was submitted and approved for up to 25 apartments and 12,000 square feet of commercial space. At the time of the submission of the use variance, we didn't have a full understanding of how the building could be configured, but we did submit a copy on the 25th of our approved use variance with that information on it. Our final plan as read by the town attorney includes 20 apartments and 6,200 square feet of commercial space. Our subdivided lot has 65 parking spaces, as was illustrated. Our residential parking requirement is 40, so two parking spaces per residential unit, and our commercial parking requirement is 28 for a total of 68. We provided within the submission on the 25th, the letter of intent for the additional cross-access easement on parking, signed by the Diocese of Rochester, signed by the St. Cattery in order to approve that. That also, one of the requests from our past meeting, and this is why it took up to the 25th, because there were some additional documentation requests, was also the maintenance agreement on the breezeway that you wanted to see within the letter of intent. So I did have that prepared and dropped off as of the 25th. Just from a use variance perspective, basically, we understand that our use variance was upheld by this New York State Supreme Court. The use variance having a higher burden of proof for a parking variance, which our lot does not need because we have the required amount. However, the side setback variance is still present on this property. You know, in terms of evaluating the variance, we have to look at the benefit versus harm to the applicant versus the community. So our position is that these variances, or at least the single variance required for side setback, without obtaining this variance, then the property could not be subdivided. On a high level, we included also a parking analysis from our architect and engineer. So that was included on the 25th submission. So if the property was attempted to be subdivided as a school, the parking requirement is 192 spaces. Our development needs only 68 spaces. So we are reducing the overall parking requirement on the site. So that's something that I...
So let me, if I understand our council's statement correctly, if your plan now has 68 parking spaces that's shown on it, and the code requires 68, and you are not in need of a variance, are you withdrawing your request for a variance from the parking then?
I would like to withdraw a request for variance from the parking. This is our council.
Daniel Brennan for the applicant. We've been advised by the town staff that we needed, and the planning board, that we needed to apply for an area variance for parking, which is why we've, why we submitted this request. So for that reason, I think that we should go forward with, with our request and that the board should, should grant the area variance because we've clearly met the standards for an area variance, which are whether the benefit to the applicant outweighs any harm to the community, the fact...
Except that the whole nature of a variance is to allow you to proceed with less than what is required by the code. And what you're telling me, at least what I hear him hearing, is we're meeting the code. So if you're meeting the code, then you don't need a variance.
I, I would agree, but from a practical standpoint, we're required to obtain a site plan review from the planning board. And my concern would be if we go back to the planning board and we do not have an approval of area variance for, for parking, that the planning board will kick it back to, to this board, just like they did last time.
Not if you point out you're meeting the code.
Right.
You don't need it. You don't need it, period.
Wasn't that point made at the outset in front of the planning board and they specifically...
At the time they made their decision, things were different. Conditions were different. Now you've locked in a number, you don't need it. You don't need it.
Well, I think then...
I'm not going to go in favor of it.
It might be helpful then as we go forward to the, to the setback variance, if we could have a statement maybe in the approval, clearly providing that we do not need a, a area variance for parking.
Well, what we can...
So that we don't end up in a, in a circle.
Well, one, one of the things that we can do to clearly communicate what our position is to the planning board is we can, if we're so inclined, we can adopt the resolution that says that we are denying the variance because it's not needed, because the plans as revised are in compliance with the ordinance. And that would make it pretty clear to them that why there's no variance, because you're in conformity with the code.
My preference would be not to have a denial on the, on the variance because if we...
Then we can also approve your withdrawal of the request based on the fact that you're in compliance with the code. But I cannot in good faith grant a variance from, on the code when you're in compliance with the code.
Yeah. I understand. And the, the only problem was that someone in the town made the interpretation that we needed to obtain the area variance. And from a practical standpoint, once that determination is made, our only option is to come to this board.
Oh, I understand that, but since you, that determination was made, as I understand it, the plan has been revised.
Mr. Chair...
And the revised plan is now in conformity with the code. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, I would like to remind the board that this is one lot that they're taking and making it two lots. So Lot 1 still would require a parking variance.
Okay.
With the church versus Lot 2 now conforms where the apartments and the commercial space is going.
That is correct, yes. So an area variance for parking would still be required here because I believe the minimum parking for the church is 383, and they're not meeting that on Lot 1.
And that's because the lot is being subdivided as opposed to the fact that it appears that the church has never been in conformity with the parking requirement.
Correct. So the subdivision triggers the need for that variance.
Except that the church is a legal pre-existing non-conforming structure, legal pre-existing non-conforming lot. So the, the parking lot is allowed under the code to, to remain. Just because the code was written after the parking lot was built and increased the required parking does not mean that the church has to tear down part of the, part of their building to comply with the code. It is allowed to remain. For that reason, we shouldn't need to obtain an area variance for the parking here. The code clearly states that, that the use as residential for 20 apartments requires less parking than use of the school as a school. It's an existing school. It's allowed to continue. It's allowed to remain. It doesn't need to be demolished. And we are now bringing the property more in compliance with the code. For that reason, we shouldn't need an area variance for setback, and we shouldn't need an area variance for parking. That has been our position all along. However, at the town's request, we made this application because we wanted to move the project forward. It has now been well over a year since we made our initial application, and we would like the opportunity to, to discuss the final site plan with the, with the planning board and obtain building permits.
So the parking variance is not for the school property, it's for the church property?
If it's required.
It's an interpretation I believe for the town to make, but I don't think that it actually matters, right? Both, the property exists, the property is currently not in compliance with the code. By taking a portion of that property, which is currently a school, and converting it to housing, you've reduced the need for parking under the Aronakoid zoning code. You're bringing it more in compliance with the zoning code, and ordinarily, logically, that doesn't require an area variance to bring, to bring a property or a structure more in compliance with the code. That ordinarily doesn't require an area variance. So that's why our position has been all along that we didn't need area variances for this project. We obtained the discretionary approval when this board approved the use variance last year.
And then reference was made to some kind of agreement with the parish or the diocese about parking. Can you fill me in more on that?
Yeah. At our last meeting, you had requested, I had alluded to the fact that we would need parking outside of our 65-unit lot. We presented the letter of intent, which defined the number of spaces that we would use on a Monday through Saturday basis for the commercial requirement, which ultimately turned out to be three. So we did have a signed agreement in place for that. You also had concerns as to the continued maintenance of the breezeway and the necessity of us, that breezeway to our project, which does provide ADA accessibility as another reason to not want to demolish it in addition to historic significance of the breezeway, which I presented a separate letter. But within that agreement with the parish, we defined parking that we could use to meet our code requirement of 68 spots, presented that to the town. So our lot does not need a variance for parking. We have all the parking that is required based on the code for the project that we're going to perform. And then the letter of intent has an agreement for that parking or additional parking off of our lot, but it also has a maintenance agreement for the breezeway, which, you know, you presented having some concern over worrying about who's going to take care of the structure in the future. So we did hash out the business terms on maintaining the breezeway, where it starts and stops, who's responsible for what, in order to ensure that this breezeway that is in between the two properties would be properly maintained in perpetuity. So that would be something that would be ultimately deeded to ensure that the breezeway is properly maintained. Additionally, just related to the breezeway, we also have a letter from our historic architects. Barrow Architecture, Chris Brant, sits on the historic board here at Aronakoid. Through conversations with the state historic preservation office, that the breezeway is an integral architectural feature of the property. So if we have to ultimately grant a single variance here for the side setback, I do feel that the breezeway is, will be maintained, is architecturally significant, and the benefit versus harm, benefit to the applicant versus harm to the community is really no harm to the community in leaving an existing structure. So I know that kind of went farther than what you asked, but I wanted to kind of sum up everything that we had in the letter of intent with the parish.
And are all of those included in what was submitted?
On the 25th...
For some reason I didn't see.
Yes. I apologize. They delivered that in hand and you did not send an electronic copy.
Not your, okay. And the other, oh, the other thing I had, had requested, which I haven't seen, is a copy of the Supreme Court decision?
That's also included in here.
That's in there too?
The motion to dismiss. And I also had our litigation counsel prepare a summary to show how very similar characteristics of the use variance also apply to these variants here. No changes to the character of the neighborhood. There is no alternative solutions for parking or the site here or side setback. Is it a substantial request that we're making? Is the request substantial? It can't possibly be substantial because our total parking on the site is less now that we've converted and you've approved the use to residential. What are the impact on the physical or environmental conditions? Our site is not changing. The breezeway is not changing. We're doing nothing except improving the condition of this building and making it safe again and repurposing it. And then, you know, the final statutory requirement for these area variances, which again is a much lower burden than the use variance that we had already proved, and they're very similar characteristics, very similar. They're slightly different on the area variance because they want the board to have more discretion and flexibility to grant these. But is that self-created? So did they self-create the existing 250, 225 parking spots on the site? Was it, was the breezeway self-created by the applicant to not be able to subdivide the property in the future? So the way we feel about these variances and the area variances not only being a lower burden of proof than the use variance that was already granted and upheld by the state Supreme Court, is that without the granting of these variances, you will be creating a new financial hardship for the parish. They will not be able to subdivide the property as a school if parking is an issue because the school has a higher and more intense use than our residential. The school parking requirement, and one of, we did submit an architectural memo describing the exact, you know, maximum occupancy of the school and how their parking would be calculated. Our plan is roughly 124 spaces in total, less. So we're reducing density. The other thing that I thought was extremely interesting is at one point in time, this exact parking lot in this structure, that church had 2,700 weekly visitors with the same number of parking, which is a much greater number. That would include, you know, the daily classes at the school, but 2,700 individual visitors for that. And if Mass was six, even seven days a week, we're talking close to 400 visitors, you know, four, 500 visitors per day at that site. So many people, and I think this is why the parking was originally granted, this was a neighborhood church. People walked from a street down or two street downs. So the site proves that it can handle the density of 2,700. The site hasn't grown since that peak in the 1960s. That reference was pulled from the Diocese of Rochester website. I put a link to it in the document that I provided. So the fact that we're reducing the overall parking requirement by over 100 on the site and the fact that, I'm not positive, but I'm fairly certain that the church doesn't get 100 or 2,2700 visitors per week to be able to accommodate that or less, then I do think that we can have this development project and live harmoniously with the existing users of the church and provide them all the parking that they need for their current and future use.
So am I understanding correctly that basically your plan is to leave the parking lot configured as it is? Because one of the plans appeared to include spaces that don't presently exist and that are in a wooded area of the property?
Yes.
And is, is that plan no longer...
At the request of the planning board, they had asked us to do the most economically feasible banked parking spaces for future use. So without radically changing the amount of green space onsite, we had our site engineer, Greg McMahon, come up with a simple location through adding 31 additional parking spaces. So that wasn't on the count, so I didn't want to falsely present that information as parking spots that were not there. And it's not designed to be created, but the planning board said, if the church is growing at the pace that they're growing at, you know, number one, the site could accommodate 2,700 weekly visitors. So I feel that the site can accommodate the number of visitors that the Latin Mass group has currently on Sundays or the other days that they have service. So I think the site, but in the extent that they're growing, I think I heard one call that it was 7% a year. I'm not sure how many members that relates to, but we added 31 additional parking spaces to be proposed to the extent that this isn't working for them in the future. So that was at the request of the planning board. We weren't insinuating that they're needed tomorrow because they're not. Our project obviously has the required number of planning, parking spaces required, but however, without granting a variance for, I guess, the site because it's pre-existing non-conforming, then we don't have an ability to subdivide the property. And the, our use being less intense than the schools, I believe creates a new financial hardship for the diocese that we would have to find a way to seek to overcome, or the property can never be subdivided, which I don't think that's the intent of the board.
Can you explain for people who don't understand, and I may be among those, what banked parking is? This is parking that doesn't exist and we're not planning on it existing, but if we need it, it, we might do it in the future, is that...
So I think just for the amount of, you know, protests from the Latin Mass group for this, you know, and we have tried to put out the olive branch and meet with them on several occasions, not met with, you know, it was similar, you know, kind of, but...
I'm, I'm just interested in the concept of banked parking spaces.
Yeah. So the planning board said, can you come up with additional parking onsite? And, you know, I honestly, when I was thinking about this, I asked Greg McMahon to have the, you know, because the Latin Mass group was concerned about their green space, they didn't like the idea. So we were able to identify 31 spaces where we could add additional parking to the site without significant loss of green space or without, you know, even though we had the subdivision. So that was looking for the future, and this was something that was requested by the planning board. There was no requirement for us to do this, not put it on there, but that they said, is there anything else? And I think part of what they were looking at was, you know, one of the statutory requirements for granting an area variance is, are there alternative solutions? Is there a way to get this site up to 577 required parking spots? You know, if it were a school and a church. So again, back to pre-existing non-conforming. We could find a way to get 31 spots somewhat easily or some number of additional spots, but they have not been created. They're there for future use to know that there could be expansion if they were needed or if the church grows in a manner that warrants creating them. But they are not there today and they're not going to be proposed as part of this project.
Okay. That was the question I was trying to get the answer to.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry.
Just one question on the bank, where the garage is? Would the garage be coming down? Because the count would only be 10 and not 12.
On the garages that we had proposed on our site plan?
No, no. I'm here drawing.
No. So we actually didn't, you know, and this was difficult in determining, you know, the last time, and I think Mr. Upson was the one that said, exactly how many parking are there? You know, what's the count in the pre-existing? So we did create an engineer's document and had the architect analyze it, but it was very difficult to come up with what the accurate count was. You know, I had to go get fire code things. There was some assembly space at the school, but the garages will stay, the ones that are attached to the rectory, because we made the assumption that the rectory's parking was covered with the garage spaces. And it was, so...
That's, I'm looking at the south side or the west side of Lot 1.
Oh, the west side? That again is, that's not on our property, so we do not have the right to disturb that in any way, shape, or form.
I understand that, but you're calling the 31 spaces and it's actually only 29.
Oh, if the garage was...
Yeah.
So we're, I guess, I'm not sure if, I'll have to ask the engineer on that. Is that with the assumption that the garage would be demolished?
Yes.
Okay. So that, I guess that would make the assumption that the garage would be demolished for two spaces, but is the garage... for two spaces, but is the garage currently a two-car garage? It would also result in two spaces? It's a three, the one that's on the, okay.
Greg McMahon, McMahon-Leroux Associates, engineers. The garage, I think, is currently used for, it's not for automobiles, it's used for.
I can understand that, but all these numbers go all over the place.
Right.
And the drawing we had last time's totally changed. There's an additional handicap going on the other side, you know, we're on the other side next to lot two, that drops another space. And then we talk about banked and we don't know, you know, I'd like personally to know what it's exactly going to be. Because when you come up with a number, that should be, you know, come to us with that number.
Right, and, and.
And I can, I understand what you guys have to do.
But normally banked parking, from a planning board standpoint, many sites, they'll approve banked parking. And that, what also what that enables is that when the owner determines that he's in need of the parking, he doesn't have to come back to the planning board to get approval. He would just need to get any necessary permits from the town to construct that parking. So it doesn't re, if you have a plan approved with banked parking, you eliminate that trip back to the planning board.
So that's, the banked parking is not in our counts.
I understand.
Yeah.
But you know, when you throw out numbers and then you look at it, comes up with something different, it makes it a little difficult to, to understand.
I've been doing it for a year and I'm still learning new things and confused as well. I apologize, but there's a lot of different ways to slice this piece of pie. So I guess kind of in conclusion on our side, and I know you're reviewing some materials for the first time, but.
I can ask you one thing more.
Yeah.
Is two ADA spaces enough for what you have? Is there a requirement on how many you might have to have? Because you only showed two.
Um. Two lots or?
Two park, two parkings for ADA, for handicap.
Oh, I believe that we meet our ADA requirement.
I'm not, I, I've just asked because I don't know what the code is.
Yeah, and if we have to.
Well, then it screws up numbers again.
Yeah, I, well, because you're thinking it'll reduce our count? I, this was done in accordance, you know, contemplating ADA requirements.
The side setback that you're asking us to address, can you go over that with me, please?
Yeah, so the side setback is for the breezeway.
The west side?
Yes, it's the west side of the property. You know, this was conducted or constructed at the same time the church was. You know, the idea would be that the children from the school would be able to walk across. Now, our property line, if we took that into account and the structure wasn't there, our property line does make, you know, have the appropriate side setback. However, our thoughts, at least on the statutory requirements of, you know, granting a, an area variance associated with this are, is there an undesirable change in the neighborhood? I would say no, because it's an existing thing. Are there alternate solutions? Yes, we could demolish the structure. However, we have a memo from the State Historic Preservation Office as well as Barrow Architecture that would indicate this is a defining historic element of the property. I also think it provides aesthetic screening to the parking lot area. So the fact that it is an existing structure, is the variance that we're asking for on side setback substantial? Yes, it is zero. 15 feet is our required. However, our, you know, property line does meet that. Additionally.
So the zero setback that you're asking for is from the exterior of the north wall of the breezeway to the exterior of the south wall of the breezeway? Is that correct?
Um, from north to south, so the property line would be running north to south.
Right.
So it'll bisect the breezeway, you know, it'll ultimately maybe 15% of it will be on our property line and we will create a demising wall between the two.
But you're, the property line will go right up to your part, end of your part of the breezeway and up to the beginning of the part of the breezeway.
Exactly, yeah, front to back.
So that's where the zero setback is?
Yeah.
And that's the only variance that you're asking for? That zero setback is for that?
For that small structure that might be six feet wide and, you know.
Whatever it is.
Ten, six by 10 or something like that, or 12 feet. It's also an accessible entrance, not for the church, but it is for the school. So it is an entrance that's on grade, so there is value to us outside of the architectural and historical significance to keeping that because that's where we plan to place our elevator in the building for ADA access. And then ultimately, you know, the benefit versus harm in keeping the breezeway, I think it's an easy argument that keeping it creates no additional harm to the community. And I'd actually say keeping it because of its screening of a parking area and, you know, consistency with the neighborhood for the last 50 years is an, is an easy statutory requirement and there is no harm to the community of keeping it. It's been there since the late 60s, early, you know, and has not created a problem. We also have a memo from Barrow Architecture from their conversation with the State Historic Preservation Office regarding the historic significance of that, which is something that you, the board had asked for on our last meeting, is to kind of determine the historic significance and they have determined it historically significant. So I guess in aggregate, you know, our lot does not require a variance. We have the parking that we need for our apartments. Our apartment requirement, the school, if it were to be subdivided, requires 192 parking spaces. So anyone that would be attempting to do this as a school would not be able to subdivide the school or operate a school there without a variance. So that's also a requirement or a consideration of this. Our variances meet the statutory requirements for approving an area variance, which are at a lower burden of proof than the financial hardship variance that we had, was approved by the board and upheld by the State Supreme Court. This hardship was not created by the owner of the property per se. This was a church that at one time, the 225 existing parking spots were, you know, sufficient for 2,700 weekly visitors. So if either people were walking, because it was a community church, kids were walking to school, families had one car, so this was approved at a time when, and I also believe that the Catholic Church might have had, you know, more power within the community to able to do this. And it's not dissimilar for many communities that are attempting to redevelop, you know, former church properties as well. Most of them do not have the required parking because they were neighborhood churches. So I don't think that that's changed. We have people from the neighborhood here that, and I also don't think, you know, they're seeing 2,700 weekly visitors on the same site. So we're meeting the statutory criteria and we're also, the benefit versus harm. Would it be harm to the community in granting a parking variance for a pre-existing non-conforming site? Does that harm our community of Rondiquite? Is there people not affiliated with the Latin Mass group here protesting our project? Is it's supported by the community? And I believe that's yes. Other people that have come here associated with the group may disagree with me. And then without the granting of this variance, do we create a new financial hardship for the parish? Will they, who can they sell this property to? If it cannot be sold to a school and subdivided, if it cannot be sold and utilized for the use variance for similar criteria that was previously granted at a less dense parking requirement, what can be done here? The school will be continued to be blighted, will continue to be an unsafe condition. Kids will continue to break in there and I do fear that somebody will get hurt at some point. I, I think about that and I do think that there are many people in the community, people that are retiring and wishing to stay in Rondiquite that might want their children or grandchildren to move into this neighborhood, to stay there and sell their homes to bring in, you know, new, younger people to this community. And I think when I, when we develop 20 new apartments, to me, those are 20 new middle-class homes that people can move into in Rondiquite because the people that are going to rent them have been in this community for 30 or 40 years already. And that's what our waiting list is full of. I wish I could do 100 of these units somewhere. That's all, any further questions?
Any questions or comments from the board?
Jim, just to, um, just to circle back, so as far as the variance, the side setback variance and then the resolution, what are we doing with the, the first part? You said something about a resolution denying the variances because they are in compliance. Are those are the two aspects that we're looking at for this project now?
Well, if I understand it correctly, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding now is that the lot two, which is the use variance lot, conforms with the parking requirements for the town, but lot one will not, to the extent that lot one never did, I guess. It's not, I, I guess that because it never did and now because this parcel's being separated, it triggers a need for the variance for lot one, so I guess that's what's in front of us.
Thanks. And some may say that because we're reducing the overall parking density on the site, I'm not, I've heard differing opinion on if it's required or not, but.
I'm not sure that everybody could agree on anything with respect to this application.
It's fair.
But I think your point is that you're not increasing the density of parks.
That's accurate. Our, our plan reduces the density requirement by about 125 spaces. And also with the same lot, that church saw 2,700 weekly visitors.
And other than the banked parking spaces that may never come into existence, the number of spaces is going to be the same as it has been for the last 20-plus years?
Since this property was developed in this condition.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Devlin?
So look at all this, I assume that the parking for the apartments will not be fenced off?
I don't believe that we're planning on putting a fence in those locations. I'm not sure if there's any bollards or, we don't currently have a fence proposed.
In other words, well, I'm assuming, looking from what I see in here, there will be absolutely no restrictions from anybody who's at church using empty spaces in your lot.
I don't think that there will be a way to restrict that on site, no. There's not going to be any security arms or things like that.
For people to be cooperative.
I, that's the situation when I went to, you know, the Latin Mass group a few years ago, we talked about that and it was a difficult conversation because I don't think they wanted to see anything happen there. I understand the fear of change, but, you know, we did reach out, you know, put the olive branch out there. So I, there will be no security restricting parking at our site. Now, if it's excessive and abusive, then, you know, I, I don't have an answer for that right now. We've never had a problem. And I also don't believe that everybody that's renting an apartment there will have two cars. I just don't see it. You know, it's, most municipalities are down to 1.5 cars per, per unit, so it's just, you know, we're complying with code requirements.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, it's, can we, we're basically dealing with a variance on the church property, lot one for parking and a variance on lot two for the zero setback, correct? Can we?
That's what I understand.
And it's all right to deal with them as, as a package like that?
Correct.
It's, as the owner of the property, the, you know, I am an agent because I have a contract to acquire the property and I am not the owner of the property, but that contract is, gives me some level of agency authority and their permission to make these municipal requests for approvals for variance.
You're acting as agent for the church and?
For the current owner of the property, which is the parish. You know, for our, you know, whatever municipal approvals are required for this subdivision. But however, without the variance for that lot, then the property cannot be subdivided, right? So the use variance that was granted for financial hardship would cease to exist, I guess, I'm not sure, or a new use, or a new financial hardship would be created.
Seeing no other questions or comments from the board, we'll open this up to public input at this point.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Don't all rush. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application, since I suspect that there's going to be more than just Mr. Zoglan, if the rest of you who wish to address the board could line up on the wall to your left there and form a line and come up one at a time, identify yourself, that would be appreciated. It will help us move things along a little more efficiently for the seven or eight applicants who are following this.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, honorable board members. My name is Jacob Zoglan. I'm an attorney and partner of the Zoglan Group here in Rochester. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Denise Flanagan in opposition to 43 North Real Estate's area variance application. I'm going to focus first on the SEACER issues that Mr. Chairman asked me to comment on and provide a letter on at the last meeting, and then I'll address some of the comments from the developer that I think were incorrect. So we did prepare a short letter on the SEACER issues and I'm going to address those briefly here. That's going to address what SEACER requires under these circumstances. First, SEACER is not yet complete here, and so this application cannot be granted yet. The proposed project requires multiple approvals, and so SEACER requires that this application be subject to what's called a coordinated review, meaning that the lead agency may consult with interested agencies who have a specific expertise or concern in any given area and must consult with all involved agencies who have authority to issue a decision regarding the project. And that has to happen, that coordinated review, prior to making the determination of significance. Coordinated review in this case should include the Planning Board, the ZBA, and SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office. Second, the coordinated review must analyze all cumulative impacts from the project as a whole, meaning impacts from all municipal applications, which undeniably hasn't happened yet. That would be any use variance, area variance, site plan, subdivision, all of it. If there was something involving SHPO, it'd be that too. Third, where new information is discovered, or here's a big one, changes in circumstances related to the project, right? A big change in an application that was not previously considered, the lead agency must rescind any previously issued negative declarations of environmental significance and consider the new information or project changes or circumstances under SEACER. So anything new that hasn't been reviewed, any changes to the application from previous ones, those all trigger requirements to rescind the negdec and do a complete SEACER review after coordinated review. This is especially true in situations like this, where an environmental impact statement was never prepared or accepted for the project. Now, by contrast, when a new project is proposed, SEACER must begin anew. And I think there's good reason either to consider this a completely new application or a very significant change in circumstances. It's undeniable that new information has been discovered and they've admitted that there have been significant changes both in the design, the layout of the site plan, the subdivision. the subdivision lines, how much commercial use is going to be in the project, parking spaces. I mean, I can't imagine any issue that's remained the same, maybe one or two things like the name. But those, those things have changed since the subdivision application was originally made, the site plan application was made, the use variance was granted, and before the first area variance application was submitted. So all of these are project changes that require additional scrutiny under seeker. Likewise, where project documents show a very significant change in project circumstances, which again, the use variance, sorry, the, the commercial use square footage increase from 5,000 to 6,000, and now it sounds like 6,200 or more, that is a very substantial change. And so because the ZBA never considered the project change, you know, from 50,000, from 5,000 to 6,000 to 6,200 of commercial space, that change must be analyzed under seeker before the application can be decided. Even if an environmental impact statement and POSDEC had previously been issued, the newly discovered facts and changes in circumstances would require the lead agency to prepare what's called a supplemental environmental impact statement to address specific significant adverse environmental impacts not addressed or inadequately addressed in the use variance seeker view, which again, did not include an EIS and did not consider other project-related application changes. So when the project as a whole is analyzed under seeker, it's clear that this will create non-conforming property conditions, non-conforming uses, potentially significant adverse impacts that have not been considered and mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. I'm not going to go over the specifics of those because I've covered them in depth in letters and those letters have been incorporated by reference. So if you treat this as a changed application, these facts warrant reopening seeker, rescinding the prior NEGDEC, and conducting a coordinated review, issuing a POSDEC and requiring preparation of an EIS. But if you look at it a different way and you treat this as a new project because of how significantly different this one is from any previous one, a similar outcome is still required. A coordinated review, POSDEC, preparation of an EIS. For these reasons.
Can you wrap it up?
I'm wrapping it up right now. Thank you for allowing me to provide comment. I can briefly address some issues that the developer raised, which is that, one, the Supreme Court's decision in the prior use variance application, I can't believe they're still arguing about this. It's subject to an appeal and the appeal has not been decided. So to the extent that they're claiming that there's a final decision, there is not. This case is being, a notice of appeal has been filed and the deadline to perfect the appeal has not passed. So there's not a final decision because it's still being subject to appeal. And even if it weren't, this is a different application, a different project, a different administrative record, a different test with five different factors that need to be considered. There's no case law that finds that a Supreme Court's decision on a separate application for a use variance binds a board on a different application for a different area variance application.
Mr. Zoglan, you've been given an extra two minutes.
May I briefly address those only two?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you. They make an argument about a pre-existing non-conforming use. That's just not so. They are creating two new lots. You do not get pre-existing non-conforming protections when you create a new lot. You do not get pre-existing non-conforming use protections when you establish new uses. Those are red herrings and false as a matter of law. They argue that the breezeway is needed for ADA access because they want to put their elevator there. The breezeway is not needed. If you take out the breezeway, you can still have the elevator in the same location and still have an entrance at that location. That's a red herring, again. They've made claims about the breezeway being historic. They haven't provided any documents by my knowledge. And last, I'll say the last item, which is that they apparently allegedly submitted something like hours before the deadline. I want to thank Mr. Chairman for recognizing that that is not good for public participation and that you would mention that you were going to allow the public an opportunity to respond and give us a week in addition to what the developer has.
Mr. Zoglan, excuse me, it's been a whole nother minute, sir.
I was just addressing, I was just addressing with Mr. Chairman.
All right. But let's move along so we can hear from everyone because it's, well, that hasn't been changed yet. It's.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Still on old time.
We'll rest on our papers unless you have anything further.
Thank you.
And, and sorry about going a little long.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Claybaugh. I live at 46 Running Brook Lane, 14626. I'm speaking on behalf of Christine Misha, who resides at 4795 St. Paul Boulevard. She expresses her strong opposition to the area variance, variances that are being requested by McMahon Leroux Associates, acting as an agent for 43 North Real Estate. If these changes are approved, I feel that they may be detrimental to the parish as well as the surrounding neighborhood. Some of the concerns that I have are summarized here. Number one, the August 7th, 2024 cover letter from Joel Barrett incorrectly states that, quote, "It is almost," no, excuse me, "it is also important to note that the parking is greatly underutilized by the property's sole tenant who uses the lot on Sunday only, with a maximum attendance at peak services of approximately 225 parishioners at Christmas and Easter," end quote. Number two, the maximum attendance during peak services is greater than 225 parishioners. In addition to Sunday masses, there are also faith formation classes for the children and coffee hours. As a result, there is overlap in which cars from both masses are in the parking lot at the same time. Number three, in addition to being used on Sunday, the parking lot is also utilized throughout the week during both daytime and evening hours. For example, the parking lot is used for weddings, funerals, and other parish activities, such as church meetings, choir practices, and community social events. In addition, there is an iteration chapel, which is open Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The number of attendees for these activities vary and sometimes exceed the average attendance. Number four, our parish continues to grow and attendance is increasing, so it is crucial to have adequate parking. If some of the existing parking spaces that are close to the church are designated for apartment or commercial use, parishioners will need to park farther away from the church or possibly in the street. If this occurs, it raises safety and accessibility concerns for some of the older and handicapped parishioners, particularly during the winter months. Number five, based on the parking variance plan diagram, I'm very concerned about potential accidents if the proposed 15 banked parking spaces to the south of lot one are approved. These parking spaces will require drivers to back out directly into the main entrance driveway of the church, which is extremely busy on Sundays. To make matters worse, they are proposing snow storage to the left of these parking spaces near St. Paul Boulevard, which can potentially block the driver's view of cars that may be pulling in or out of the property. Number six, furthermore, if the 15 banked parking spaces are approved, we will lose valuable green space with beautiful mature trees. The trees that will be lost are not shown on the diagram. This area provides such a beautiful setting for the church. It is not only beautiful, but the area is currently used for many parish activities, such as family nights on the lawn, parish picnics, Easter egg hunts, and Sunday gatherings after both masses. All of this will be lost if we replace it with parking spaces. Number seven, parking may be further impacted in the future since we have no idea who will occupy the commercial spaces or what their hours of operation will be. Number eight, I'm wondering where the trash dumpster, dumpsters will be located for the apartments and commercial space and whether additional parking space will be needed to accommodate the dumpsters. Number nine, I am concerned about the snow storage areas. I noticed that most of the snow is being placed in various areas of lot one. If we have a bad winter, I can envision huge mounds of snow that could possibly obstruct a driver's vision, particularly in the area near St. Paul Boulevard. In summary, I urge you to disapprove this request. If approved, it could forever change the character of the beautiful church grounds and neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration and for your continued service and support of our community. And that was from Christine Misha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol Burke and I live at 354 Pine Cross Drive. I'm standing here before you today because I think that this does ruin the characteristics of this neighborhood in every possible way. I've been to every one of these meetings. It started two years ago and at the time, I stood up after everyone else and I said to the applicant, "Every place you are describing to us has nothing to do with this," because every place he was redoing was a commercially zoned, large area. I was met with no comment because there isn't a comment. This is a small parcel in between a whole block of a church whole configuration. It doesn't fit. It is too small. But the applicant wants to buy the building for the diocese, from the diocese, and it has been nothing but confusing and dysfunctional from the very first meeting because first we're going to build apartments, this many. The next meeting, six months later, we're going to build luxury apartments. Then, you know, a few months goes by, now we're going to, oh, garages. And then a few couple months later, oh, no garages. Oh, well, now we're going to put a third floor on. Oh, now we're going to put a garden rooftop on. Oh, now we're going to do this. Now we're going to do this variance, that variance, the other variance. As far as the parking goes, I was there three weeks ago. It wasn't a holiday. It wasn't a special day. It was a Sunday. It was 10:30 in the morning. There were six available parking spots in the entire parking lot. I looked at it specifically because every meeting I hear about parking and, oh, there's plenty and on and on, there isn't. So in the end, I'm wondering, if this is approved, which it shouldn't be, if it is approved, so who's to say that we're not going to have garages after you approve all this parking? Because is that in the plan? In the spring, the planning board said to the applicant, "You come to us, we need a real plan, a plan spelled out just like a contractor brought a month ago." So it was postponed all summer. And then we come to fall, he said, "If you don't bring a specific plan in the spring, you're going to have to start from day one." It never happened. He just kept being postponed and now we just keep going to another meeting every month and nothing seems to change. And tonight again, the parking and the plans are upside down. There is nothing really set in stone. And it's disturbing and I hope you don't pass it. Thank you for listening to me.
Good evening, board members. My name is Renee Zagarelli and I live at 175 Schofield Road. I grew up in Henrietta and spent most of my time as a kid in my hometown or in the suburbs to the south and the east. Infrequently, were we in the city or north of it, though there were such occasions. I can distinctly remember driving on St. Paul for the first time in my early twenties with my parents and asking them as we were driving, "Where are we? This is part of Rochester?" I was struck by the charm of the tree-lined streets with sidewalks and the architectural beauty of the older homes. When it came time for my fiance, now husband, and me to search for houses, we went all over greater Rochester, but we were heavily drawn to Arondacoyte. Not because of the small lots, not for the small closets, but because of the charm of those tree-lined streets with sidewalks and that architectural beauty. We bought our 1920s starter home 13 years ago and four kids later, we are still in that same house, despite having scoured the area for a home to fit our growing family. Coming back from open houses outside of Arondacoyte, we would always return to Schofield Road and breathe a sigh of relief as we drove under the canopy of the familiar trees and back to our own square footage of architectural beauty. Another paramount reason why we have decided to stay in Arondacoyte is because of St. Thomas. We became parishioners there after having kids and found there our community. The church and the campus are beautiful, of course, but it's the people ultimately that make it home. If the school building variance, parking lot variance is approved, sorry, our campus and possibly church attendance will change. Once, once one change happens, it's uncertain and it seems like there's a lot of uncertainty what changes will follow. To allow this development to happen, while it may seem to bring with it the ideals of positive change, of growth, of revenue, I argue that this change does not belong on our campus. There are reasons why people choose to live in Arondacoyte and not Henrietta. My kids and I always watch with great sadness as a giant maple tree is cut down, the stump ground to obliteration. I explain to them that however sad it is, it's for the best. Its absence does change the landscape, though, the neighborhood that much poorer for its loss. So it is that we always cheer when we see the town coming to plant a new tree in its place. And I've never thought too much about the process until now, but how strange it would be to see a crew come with a palm tree or a cactus, not native to our area, or even a hydrangea bush that we do see all over town. It would detract from the integrity of the character of Arondacoyte. And so, as sad as it is to see the school buildings sit empty, we have hope as a community that one day a school will be reinstated there, that the building's original and natural function will be restored with new life, not converted into something that does not fit with the character of our campus. Along those same lines, the town stands to gain nothing financially from the planting of a new tree. In fact, it costs the town. The tree will not produce anything of monetary worth to be sold or traded, and yet the tree has value. It enhances the life of those who live here and attracts new people to our area. I hope you can see my analogy. If you decide to grant variances to this property based solely on potential financial gains, dismissing the impact of the change to our area, it will ultimately devalue the property and subsequently the town. While local amenities are important, I would argue that they are not so essential that they should be added wherever and however to our town. There are locations that make sense for these kinds of properties. The campus of St. Thomas is not one such location. As you have heard from other people, the concerns I've mentioned are only part of the problem. Issues of safety and parking overflow are also problematic. As much as I've said about choosing to live in Arondacoyte over Henrietta, I had a wonderful childhood there. I grew up on a cul-de-sac and had a true nineties childhood experience, playing outside until dark with neighbors, our parents unconcerned. I can honestly say that St. Thomas has offered my four kids these nostalgic kinds of childhood experiences more than even our own neighborhood. The kind that adults these days love to reminisce about as they are on the wane for various reasons. From organized events such as Easter egg hunts, Friday night story hour in the summer, and pumpkin painting and outdoor movie nights in the fall, to more importantly, the spontaneous childhood activities that occur most Sunday mornings after mass, Lili's, Acorn Factory, Empower Kids, to name a few. What they are, I'm not exactly sure, but that's my point. I feel comfortable as a parent sitting in the parish center, knowing my kids are running around the spacious campus inventing their own fun. I've never feared for their safety from strangers or vehicles because the campus offers them the room and security to play, where fellow parishioners lend a watchful eye when a parent is not immediately in sight. If there is anything worth investing in, in our town, it is saving spaces like these for the children who will carve their deepest childhood memories on its grounds. It goes without saying that disrupting the parking lot and the unknown changes to follow would greatly interfere with the experiences we are able to provide for our children and in their creativity that they come up with on their own. In all motherly honesty, I'm far more concerned with the chopping of our campus in half, blocking direct access to the remaining buildings on the property which are used weekly, creating unsafe passage for our children than the chopping down of our beautiful and beloved street trees. In closing, you, the zoning board of the town of Arondacoyte, must make this decision reading the code, but interpreting it for our town, not for Henrietta where I grew up, but for Arondacoyte, honoring what makes our town such a unique suburb that would literally make a young 20-something gasp in awe while driving down St. Paul, admiring what was established before any of us were born and that which will hopefully outlast us all, that which was built with craftsmanship, character, and charm, that which makes our town, our St. Thomas campus, special, that which will keep our children and grandchildren choosing this town with its charming tree-lined streets with sidewalks and architectural beauty and space for authentic childhood play over larger lots and bigger closets. Deo Gloria, thank you.
Wow, Linda Wilson, Harvington Drive. Hard to follow that without getting too emotional.
Ms. Wilson, I'm sorry, what address on Harvington?
98.
Thank you.
The first thing I want to address is that every meeting I've been to, whether it was the planning board or the ZBA, is that Joel says he has complete community support for this project, and that is simply not true. I am not a parishioner. I simply am a resident that lives nearby the St. Thomas campus. And I have my grandchildren who are growing up right across the street from that on Washington Avenue and all the things that I've heard with the safety, the increased parking and all the things that are still not decided because every meeting it seems like Joel has a new plan or a change to this plan or a change to that. And I still feel like I don't know what he's really wants to do, other than I did hear 6,200 square feet for commercial and now it's 20 apartments. The word luxury was not, has not been added lately. And, and I don't understand really about the banked.
And, um, and I don't understand really about the bank parking. So is that after it's been approved, later on, we might add bank parking and take more green space away? Because they're already taking down how many trees and changing the whole look of the landscape of this project? It isn't just about taking away parking or subdividing it into the church parking lot and the, now the commercial parking lot, and then the apartment co- parking lot. So it's just, um, very disturbing to me that I feel like he, when he said that he turned in the, his new plan on 3:30 on, on, on the 25th of last month, um, I made sure I got mine in two days before that, um, my email to Michelle. And I just want to make sure that the ZBA understands what this really means as a whole. It isn't just about adding more space for people. It's, it's going to ruin the whole charm and character, no matter what he says, and no matter how many things he can keep. There's still a talk about adding another floor, and where is the garbage going to go? And I just hope that the ZBA really takes into account that we need to have a real plan, a finalized plan, before they can really make a good decision on this whole project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Kim DiPerjetto. I reside at 4559 St. Paul Boulevard. My concerns have also been that more of environmental. I live across the street from there. I see it. I'm hearing about this third floor. I don't know whether that was something that was committed to already in one of the meetings that I misunderstood. I still have such a concern with rooftop air conditioners in that neighborhood. When the other apartments, um, behind, um, I can't remember where they are, Epititus, the people who have the homes over there had to listen to the noises, the trucks at night and stuff coming through. That has been a residential, quiet neighborhood, and you are going to change everything. The parking is going to change. I've been walking over there. I, again, am that, my husband went to school there, and it's too bad that a school can't go back there because there's no reason that there's not enough parking for school. But I don't understand how things like the garbage, the traffic. There are so many little kids in that neighborhood that get on their bicycles and ride to school. And this is just like, I'll say in the last 10 years, my children are grown. But I now watch my grandkids ride the bus. But the kids that live in my neighborhood, that's all filling in with young community people. And their kids are riding bikes. I mean, you're talking about added traffic to that area? Those, those exits on all the streets, you're talking St. Paul, you're talking Coldbrook, you're talking Washington. There's kids, um, like I said, on bicycles all the time. I have concerns about that. I have concerns about you changing the green space there at the church. I walk over there the last few Sundays just to check on the cars. Everybody's saying, "Nobody's going to church there." I'd like to know where they're going to park people in the apartment, and then only have maybe two disability parking spots and whatever other parking spots they have. I still am very con- confused, and I live across the street. And I know a lot of my neighbors haven't been able to get here, or they're just totally disgusted with what's going on. But I just can't understand how this can go forward without looking at how all those other things are going to negatively impact that very small community. That street, Coldbrook Drive alone. You're talking people on Sunday are parked four, five, six cars down on that side sometimes. And in, you know, in the winter, nobody's parked there, but you should see what it's like when the snowplows are out. You know, I just, I just have big concerns about a structure like that. When a school had had concerns, and this was there, a school has been there before, and there's never been an issue of parking and all that. I mean, kids aren't driving their cars to school in elementary school. So I just don't understand why such the negativity about a school versus putting the apartments there that I just think, I know it's past the character that nobody's concerned, but it is. It, you take that green space away, you are forever going to change it. And I, I want to understand too, where do you, where do you divide that green space for the people that move into these 22 to 24 apartments? Or to the people who visit the commercial space? Where is their green space versus the church? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm back.
Welcome.
Aurora Shellhorn, 527 Pine Grove Avenue. I guess I'm just as surprised as you were when our, coming to this meeting and giving up my time, expecting a result after last, the last meeting we had here. I thought the, the program, what you wanted and requested last time was for the 23rd. Turns out it was 25th. It was pretty clear that you had stated that you needed to give your information to you by that time. I'm surprised that you don't, didn't have it. So I, I have some questions about the things that came up at the last meeting. First of all, the trees that were going to be cut down in front of the school, I mean, in front of the church entrance. Are they going to be removed? Are they going to be left? It was an issue then. So we had, several issues came up about this parking lot that are sort of neglect. I was shocked to see that it was a totally different, um, agenda that we were going to come and meet today for. We were going to make a decision because last, the last meeting, he asked you make, to make a decision right then and there because some Supreme Court said that it should, it was okay to make that decision then. And then here we are again in a, in, in a circle, going around, not knowing what it is that they really, really want to do. I, I have some issues that I, it's a matter of trust. I think it's very hard for you all to sit there and, and expect, I thought you were going to make a decision today. You know, you were going to read over what you got in the 25th, come here, and then there was going to be yes or no. I wasn't expecting something totally different. I just want an explanation about the commercial space. It's six, it's, um, 6,000 spaces. Where is that? Is it the, the rectory, the, the, uh, house behind the, the statues in the back? Is it the garage? What is it? Does he have, because last time he was talking about using the area around, by the circle for parking spots. And yet now it's, I don't know if that's even on the table. Is that, is that in the plan? Is it going to be there? Are we going to have our trees cut off? You were asked to think about the entrance that, of the church. And, and you said, "What entrance?" Well, the entrance coming from, um, St. Paul Boulevard into the parking spot. And, and those were the trees that it sounded like they were going to be, they're going to hit the dust. There was going to be a parking lot. So there's another thing. I was just surprised too, when you had asked to have the details of the Supreme Court decision here, tonight, in paper. And yet, it wasn't presented to you in paper. So now you're stuck again trying to make a decision without it in paper, in writing, unless you do have it.
We have it.
You have it.
And I've reviewed it.
And we, and, but they don't have it. Our, I don't know if the attorney got it. I think, I, I, we didn't hear about it. We don't know what it is. I think, I, I, I'm so unprepared for tonight, I thought it was going to be a final solution. And it's a matter of, of trust. The financial hardship keeps bringing, coming up in the, in the conversations that they have for these plans. What, whose financial hardship? It's not answered. Who is, it keeps like, it's like a, a sympathy, um, quote.
The, the financial hardship question was pertaining to the use variance, which was granted by this board a year ago, challenged in the Supreme Court, upheld by Justice Valeriani, and I understand a notice of appeal has been filed, but not perfected. But I have not been advised that any stay of Judge Valeriani's ruling has been granted. So that's the status. That's where the financial hardship relates to the use variance, which is a, over and done with at this point, unless the appellate division says otherwise. And financial hardship is not an issue with respect to area variances.
It's a financial hardship if you don't, if he doesn't do the project, if he's held up?
That's not the financial hardship that's referenced.
Is it because he keeps mentioning the offices and their financial hardship? I don't know about that. So it's a matter of trust every time. And then if he, uh, there's something that bothers me more. If you give him permission and, to do something, and then he does something else. He's going to say, "Well, I got permission to do it," because he seemed, the project seems so inflexible. It's gone on for long, yes, and it can be other choices. It's like, I, I just feel sorry for you decisions to have to be made that way. And then I had, um, I still don't know the division of the six, the, the extra 6,000 square, square of commercial space, what that involves. It's not the church. It's not the, the, the area between the church and the school. It's a school, but he separates it with the word "and." It's a school and the commercial. Both. Are they two things? Are they one thing? That's what this here says. That's, so I asked, I asked the question about the word "and."
The use variance relates to the structure that was formerly the school.
School.
Nothing more.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. So the 6,000, which became 6,200, um, was different from five, and that was the other issue that was brought up last month, about how there was a different, uh, uh, it went from five to six to s- and you were shocked at 6,000, it was not the five, and now this month is 62. And what's going to be next month? It just seems to be, nothing seems to be, um, concrete. What about fire? We, no one's talked about safety in fire and protection. We have, do we have, I'm going to put, um, what do you call it? Stairs outside to, to come down. The elevator is going up two more floors. Nothing was mentioned about building the elevator extra. And now we find out that it's been moved to a different location.
I'm sorry to jump in here. Um, you know, we're certainly sympathetic to the wider, uh, impact that this project may have if these particular variances are granted, but this board really isn't in a position, right now at least, to, uh, you know, talk about the, the greater impacts of the site and of the project itself. Really, what we're discussing in this portion of the meeting is the proposed variance for parking and the proposed breezeway variance.
So I'm wondering, we should spend time going to the planning board? Because it seems to be making decisions that, then you are here making decisions that are, should affect whatever they're deciding, and then they're deciding what you should be deciding. And it's like a cross. So that's what I'm talking about. I, it's a matter of trust, whether, whether you can trust these people to build whatever they're going to do, whatever apartments they're going to have, and then end up doing whatever they really want to do because they have control of all of that area. I'm assuming it's the, the, um, the back part. They're going to take the garage? No, they said not. But then, are we going to see it down in a couple months after they take over?
In the, in the event that the applications are approved, the garages that are existing would be on Lot 1. The development is on Lot 2. So the developer, if these are approved, has nothing to do with the garages. And that's up to the parish and the diocese.
And the diocese. And the historical, um, oversee for the entire thing, is it gone? The, the property I thought was an historical building, whole property?
That's a completely different, uh, commission. Historical Preservation Commission. That's a different board.
Another board. Okay. Thank you. I just.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm disappointed. I came to thinking if something was going to be done, and, um, it's all different. So, thank you.
Hi, Denise Flanagan, 698 List Avenue. Um, the pastor of St. Ceteris, uh, Father Gano, introduced the members of the Latin Mass community to, um, 43 North Real Estate in the fall of 2019, when, uh, 43 North was shockling, shockingly to the people in the community, offered much more of the property for purchase. Um, over three years went by before the community members heard anything else, um, about, regarding a potential purchase when 43 North, um, held in late '22, um, some meetings with the neighborhoods. Now, um, since then, two more years have gone by for a total of five, and there's still, um, very many questions with the proposal. Why the long wait if the school was in such a, would, if the school was such a financial burden to the seller? Um, the seller let it go for five years when there was discussions going on. Um, I, it, it shocks me to think that it was really that much of a financial burden if they were willing to drag it out that long, and in the meantime, turn off the heat to the building. Um, one of my biggest concerns here tonight is how does 43 North get to dictate the church's parking requirements based on attendance, but use their own requirements for their total?
Let me clarify that. They're not dictating anything for the church. Uh, they are an agent of the church.
Any, okay.
Because the church has entered into an agreement to sell to the developer that portion that we're being ac- that we approved for a use variance and we're being asked to review again tonight. They're not telling the church how many parking spaces they have. The church has given the developer a, a, an amount of space that includes a certain number of parking spaces, and the rest belong to the church. So nobody's dictating to the church what their parking has to be.
According to the, um, the drawing that was submitted, it shows that the perch, the church needs X number of spaces.
That, that's the requirement under the code. In the ideal situation, they would have X amount of spaces. They didn't have that number of spaces to begin with.
Oh, I agree.
Right.
But one section of the drawing said what the, you know, divide by three is. But underneath it said, the proposed parking spaces said, "The church only needs N." N not being what was according to code. So my point is, is, um, Lot 2 gets to dictate, Lot 2 is saying on the drawing, "We need, according to code, this number of spaces." Lot 1 is going to have this number of spaces, which the number provided on the drawing is not up to code.
The owner of Lot 1 has agreed to sell the configuration of Lot 2.
Right.
To the buyer.
Right.
All right? So the owner of Lot 1 is the one that has determined the spaces that are going to be sold.
Right, the spaces that are going to be sold, but the spaces that remain, it's, whether it's, um, Lot, or the owner or 43 North, it's shocking that the church then is saying, "Well, they only need this money, number of spaces," and it's not according to code. And I don't know what reference it is in the town code, but I do recall reading that you cannot subdu- subdivide a lot and have the parking, um, according to code. You can't make it worse than it was. Now, I know the applicant talked about the fact that he's making it better because he's claiming that he's reducing the need. That may be true, but, um, I find it hard to believe that a school needed 193 parking spaces for kids that went from kindergarten to eighth grade. So at most, I'm thinking, yeah, I might have 20 teachers and maybe five admins. So again, I don't know where the, I, 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 I'm not going to doubt that it doesn't come from the code somewhere, but I would question how a code would say a grammar school needs 193 parking spaces. Um, anyways, uh, the, the, the drawings themselves have been confusing since the, for the get, from the get-go for me personally. I see, um, neighbors' houses on the drawings that don't exist in the spots that they're there. I see names of people that aren't the actual owners. There's one couple that have lived there for 60 years, and their name isn't on there, and they are right next to St. Thomas. Um, the, the drawings also quote different numbers, um, 451 parking spaces, 453 on the same drawing, 220 and 221. Why are there's these discrepancies? It just looks a little, um, a little, um, not carefully done, let's say. The variance doesn't, um, have, uh, let's see if that's, the parking, the parking is relegating the SKT LMC members to the southern end of the parking lot, now forcing senior citizens and families with young children to cross over the main driveway coming in, again, making it somewhat of a safety hazard. And it, it's just sad that many families, both past and present, have given their money to support a 100-plus-year-old school and a 60-plus-year-old church. And it just seems that, why is the diocese or the parish allowing the members now to have to, um, interact with their own church in a different way? And I think it's only going to serve to drive people away. And ultimately, I do believe that it, it is, the first domino and the Catholic Diocese of Rochester will and the Catholic Diocese of Rochester will, is considering closing more churches now, and I think St. Thomas would be on the chopping block. And I think that the board should consider, what does that mean for the future? Okay, if these apartments go in now, but suddenly you got a big empty church that's not going to be sold to another, uh, church because there's not enough parking spaces for another big church, and that'll just open the door for more commercial business, more loft apartments in the church itself? Who knows what? And it just, um, it just, I, I think you should consider what, what the future could look like with that parcel. Um, I guess that's all for now. Thank you.
Eugene Michael, 181 Daly Boulevard. I'm also a member of St. Thomas. I submitted the official weekly mass attendance data as requested, going to, back to June 9th, uh, 2019. I hope you got that, I got it in on time. The data does not include attendance figures for weddings and funerals. Several months of actual parking data was submitted to the zoning board during the hearings for the use variance. This data shows actual vehicle counts of roughly 140 to 160 vehicles at our Sunday services, and those counts were over a period of months.
That was the, the question I had, the, the numbers that you sent. That was the attendance of people at the mass or cars parked in the parking lot?
No, they were, they were people in the pews.
Okay.
Yep. But there's a separate submission going back to June, which was given to the board that has a count for every Sunday for at least several months that shows how many cars were actually in the parking lot.
Yes, thank you. I recall seeing that.
Uh, those counts were roughly 140 to 160 vehicles on any given Sunday. What 43 North is proposing, and again, how they're proposing things for our parish, interesting. Uh, they're saying we'll have 155 spaces. So if we're going to have 140 to 160 cars there on any given Sunday, and then we have weddings and funerals with way more people than that, those cars are going to be on the street. That's the only place for them to go. And that impacts the neighborhood. If we had 300 people, and here's the other part. We've done the math. For whatever reason, our ratio is for every two people in the pew, there's one car in the parking lot. So if we have 300 people in the church, we have, need 150 parking spaces just for 300. That's what the ratio is, that's all been given to you in June. Overall parking for the two Sunday masses also creates a need for extra parking beyond that, which is reflected in the mass attendance figures. That would be the overlap between the two masses. Although this data is helpful, the bigger issue is the actual church capacity, which according to the fire marshal is 1,148. As you know, the code specifies that parking spaces are to be computed based on maximum capacity of a building. So I think it is important not to lose sight of this key issue. 43 North has submitted some very, very questionable computations, claiming that under the current code, the church, school, and parish center require 576 parking spaces. Their rationale seems to be that because we are not compliant with the current code, then reducing the church's available parking by 65 spaces will somehow improve the situation. I don't know how that can be because we're already maxed out on some Sunday. So if you take 65 spaces away, again, we'll be out on the street. I'll let you be the judge of whether that's a wise, uh, approach to all this. If the church were to be closed at some future date, it would be very hard to market with such limited parking. The partitioning of the parking lot will significantly devalue the market value of the church and creates a potential future neighborhood hazard of a large vacant building that is simply not marketable. So it's very fine that 43 North will have their 65 spaces. If the diocese were to close the church, now they're trying to sell a church with over 1,000-seat capacity with 155 parking spaces. That would most likely mean that building's going to sit there vacant for a lot longer than the school, than the school building has, which is a big concern of certain people. So you can't really make the variance for 43 North and give them, and give them all this parking without considering the issue of the church, the church's parking situation. And I would say, I'm not an expert, but it seems to me that the church needs to apply for parking variance to reduce their parking down to 155 spaces, and that has to be in conjunction with 43 North's approval. I don't see how you can approve them for 65, and then the church comes in and you say, well, you know what, you don't have enough space, so now what? We close the church? So I think they have to be done together. They both have to be considered. And I'll also say this, I think it's highly irregular that the agent for the diocese and the pastor is also the person who has the proposal to reconfigure our entire campus. The pastor of the church should be here, or somebody from the diocese should be here to answer questions about the parking situation. Because right from the beginning, I've said and thought that the parking was going to be the major hangup for this project, and it still is because here we are, a year later, still talking about it. And I think the diocese should be here, or the pastor, not an agent for 43 North who has a vested interest in minimizing our needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Dan O'Connor. I live at 37 Barron's Road. There's been discussion about parking laws. The problem is, is they only discussed one portion of the law, uh, 235-79, which gives the, the number of spaces that are required for certain situations, so many spaces per seat in the church and so on. The two other parts of the code have been completely ignored. And the first one is 235-77B, which basically says that you cannot take parking away from an existing continually-used building and use it for another reason. Why has that not been considered and talked about? That has been ignored totally by both sets of boards, uh, ever since we started. And there's another part of the code, 235-78, which gives a similar answer, that if you have a building, you cannot take parking spaces away from it. And why has that not been discussed? The other question I have is, if there is a contract or an agreement, and that is based on an illegal situation, which it is because you're not supposed to take the parking spots, isn't that contract void? Can you have a, a contract based on an illegal assumption? Uh, the calculations shown for the church are, are way out of line. Uh, number one, they shouldn't be considered based on a school. A school is no longer there, it's going to be apartment building. So any calculation that should be done should be based on an apartment building and a church, not a church and a school. The, the other thing that has to be taken into account is, if it were a school, there would be no effect on the parking, uh, on the church because the main need for the parking is on Sunday morning, and there is no school on Sunday morning. So they would be totally compatible regardless of the count that you come up with. For example, I think they come up with, uh, 220 spots that are available. They're going to take 68 or 69, that leaves about 160. We have records showing that we have parking amounts over that amount, and there is a seven or nine percent increase every year. That has to be taken into account, too. You will short the church tremendously if you allow this to go through. Why hasn't it been discussed that the church requirements, instead of just the, the apartment requirements? Uh, in some of Jake's writings about the seeker, there's a mention that, that mitigation is required if there's a situation that harms people. And that mitigation hasn't even been considered. And for example, there could be parking spots built on the property, on the Colebrook side of the church. I made, I made a rough sketch, and I came up with 22 or 23 parking spots. That could be built over there, and that would reduce the number that would be needed in the existing parking lot, making the situation a lot easier. Why has not that consideration been given? You know, planning is, is a process, uh, according to my experience at least, that you consider alternates. And there has been no alternate method of solving this problem considered, absolutely nothing. Uh, Jake has written extensively about seeker, um, and that it has to be done before certain things can be done. I made a, an attempt to go through it myself, and there's several items I'd like to give you so that a proper seeker can be done. The first one is on page four. There's 13 pages to the full seeker requirement. On page four, section D1. Time up?
It is, but you go ahead and wrap it up, please.
Well, I can give you this.
That would be good. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to, to the application who's neither for nor against it? And we'll give the applicant the opportunity to address the board if he wishes.
Thank you. Uh, Joel Barrett, I don't know if I have to restate or... Uh, so just, the use has already been decided, uh, you know, through our prior. I think the overarching is that we are reducing the overall parking requirement on the site through less intense uses. Um, regarding the, reducing the requirement of the school, the school on a standalone basis requires 192 spots. If I was going to be callous about requesting, um, you know, I am requesting the minimum relief necessary. If I was to acquire this as a school, it's not possible to, or fair to take 192 spots. So we considered the least intensive use possible on the site, which was approved. Our, our site was approved for up to 25 units and 12,000 square feet of commercial. So our application, I did so knowing that there would be many architects, engineers, state historic preservationists that would have to refine that plan. So at the time, we went to the use variance. So my ultimate presentation is less number of units, less commercial space, less parking requirement. So I refined the plan in a way to make it as hospitable as possible and as collaborative as possible. Um, so regarding the side setback variance, we know that it's historically significant. Uh, regarding some of the additional possibilities or other considerations, we have considered the bank parking. You know, we have considered increasing it for future spaces. You know, our, the gentleman that was just presenting had another idea for Colebrook, another part of the lot that we haven't considered in the future because we are just the owners of lot two. Um, so we've tried to do this in the most, um, hospitable way with the neighbors and taking into consideration their future needs. However, without these area variances, which have a lower burden of proof than the use variances that were already granted for very similar criteria, we are not able to save this building, and we are not able to go in. Now, I would imagine that they will still, even if they are granted, they will attempt to challenge them, and in the same manner, the Supreme Court that held up the use variance. You know, I would perceive that there would be very similar set of circumstances in that case. However, without the granting of this, we cannot conclude the sale. But then you've also created evidence that it could not be sold to a school or subdivided in any way possible because of the parking situation that cannot be solved on the lot of this property. So we ask that the, that the board consider our less intense use of on-site, um, consider that the side setback is architecturally significant, and also consider that the use variance has been decided, and the parking variance does not increase the harm of the neighborhood and the community. And we, our goal is not to stop the operation of the church. Our goal, and through the sale of this building, and even the parish's goal, is to be able to preserve their use of the site for a longer time by taking care of the biggest problem, the biggest safety issue on that site, which is the school building. Broken windows, people breaking in, boarded up, starting to become dilapidated, 10 years of vacancy. So it is time to, uh, breathe new life into that, which our use variances, you know, thank you, which our use variance is giving us the permission to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, this case is closed. We will now move on to the next item on the agenda. Did I miss something?
Public hearing closed?
Yes.
Are you going to close the public hearing?
Public hearing is closed, the case is closed.
Mr. Chairman, you said that the public could have an opportunity to respond to the new submissions submitted at, uh, like 3:30 on the date it was due?
I said you would have another week.
Oh, so you will give us a week?
One week.
Uh, what date would you like that?
Well, given that it's, uh, already November 4th, this Friday is, I believe, the 8th. So your submissions need to be in by November 15th.
Okay.
And then there's, that's the only other thing that's coming in. There's nothing after that.
So submissions due November 15th?
Yes.
And we'll be able to obtain them by calling the ZB secretary?
Sure.
I just want to make sure you wouldn't require a foil because then we wouldn't get it within the time frame.
I'm not interested in delaying this any longer than is absolutely necessary under the circumstances, and this is my fault for not setting up two dates. I hadn't, hadn't thought of that, and I certainly should have. So my apologies to the people who were expecting a decision.
So this is just, Mr. Chairman, this is just new submissions from the applicant agent?
It's the submission from the Mr. Zoglin. The people who, it, it's only responsive to what the applicant submitted on September 25th at 3:30. Or October 25th at 3:30.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's what it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I got it correctly into the record. I apologize.
Right, oh, no, I want to make sure the record is accurate.
So I have, the only submissions accepted will be from the applicant's 1025 2024 revisions. The public hearing was closed.
Correct. Anything that's in response to the applicant's 1025 submission is due by November 15th. And the only reason it's November 15th is because there's two, essentially holidays in between.
Gotcha. Thank you. So the next case on the agenda is case number ZB 2024-Ton-05. McMahon-Leroux Associates acting as agent for Wade and Gina Weaver are seeking area variances to re-subdivide a portion of lot three, 240 St. Joseph Street into lot R2, 246 St. Joseph Street, creating lot R3 to become a non-conforming lot, non-conforming in lot depth, 125 feet where 300 feet is required in lot area, 15,250 square feet where 43,650 square feet is required in the RR Rural Residential District.
I'm trying to find my copy of this. Oh, I think I gave it back. Yeah, I think I gave it back to her after last week's meeting, but that's all right. Good evening. Sorry, we were trying to figure out.
Uh, Greg McMahon with McMahon-Leroux Associates, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York.
Along with?
Gina and Wade Weaver. Gina and Wade Weaver, two forty-six St. Joseph Street.
If you'd all raise your right hands, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
If I understand your application, you want to redraw the lines?
It's, it would be a re-subdivision of two lots. Both lots are owned by the Weavers. The Weavers live in, or occupy two forty-six St. Joseph and own the home on two forty.
All right, so if I'm driving down St. Joseph Street, what do I notice that's different if we grant your application?
Absolutely nothing.
That's what I thought.
This, uh, this, uh, two forty St. Joseph is a, an oddly shaped lot. The house, the driveway are out on St. Joseph and there's a long, narrow finger that parallels the Weaver's side yard of their main house. And they would like to add that strip to their main property, runs adjacent to their home and pool, and leave the property out on St. Joseph that they own. Is that rental property?
No, no, no. No, it's not rental.
It's, uh, leave, leave the, the home on the main lot facing St. Joseph. Again, there's no buildings proposed, no changes. This is just a lot line adjustment. But as a result, we're asking for a relief from the minimum lot size and the minimum lot depth. And again, there are many properties in this zoning district in this area of similar size to the smaller lot we're requesting. So we don't feel that what we're looking for is out of character with the neighborhood.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about re-subdivision and what it means? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Thank you.
Next case on the agenda is case number ZB twenty-twenty-four dash eleven dash O one. Amelia Gonzalez Rodriguez is seeking an area variance to construct a three hundred and sixty-four square foot pavilion in the rear yard with a setback of one foot nine inch from the rear lot line where four feet is required on premises nine Ranch Drive in an R2 residential district.
Hi, Chairman. So let my daughter speak because I speak Spanish. Sometimes the people don't understand, okay?
Okay. So your daughter is interpreting for you?
Yeah.
All right, so first what I need your daughter to do is to raise your right hand. Will you accurately and literally translate everything that is said by us in English to your mother in Spanish and what is said by your mother in Spanish to us in English?
Yes, yes, I will.
Okay. Now, for your mom, can you have her raise her right hand? Ask her if she swears that everything she says tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Then you may proceed.
Can I just have your name?
Sure. My name is Salma Badayan.
Can you spell that, please?
Yes. It's S.A.L.M.A. Last name G.B.A.D.E.Y.A.N. I reside at nine Ranch Drive, Rochester, New York.
Thank you.
So my mom have prepared a letter. I can read it to you, is that okay?
That would be fine.
Okay. Esteemed member of the boards, I am, I am writing explaining the circumstance surrounding the construction of a pavilion in my yard and explain the ground to which I seek for a variance based on the existence of less than what is required for a rear setback from the rear lot line north side of my property. So please find below a citation from the section of the town of Aranda Coit. Section two thirty-five zoning, two thirty-five dash thirteen accessory structure C states that accessory structures and uses shall meet all of the following requirements. Three, side and rear setbacks, detached accessory structures and uses excluding private garages shall be located no closer than four feet to the rear or side property line and no closer than six feet to the principal building. Initially on our property, there was a shed that was situated on a concrete foundation very close to the north and west side of our property. When our family decided to build a pavilion, we assumed that location on the old shed that it compelled with the, the town's regulation. As a result, we built a new, a new structure in line with existing foundation oriented to the north side of the property. However, we ended up with twelve feet zero inches approximately away from the west side, but only one feet nine inches away from the north side of our property line, following the previous structure. Subsequently, we learned that the actual location did not adhere to the city law and we were too close to the north side of the property line. As a result of this, we are now making every effort to rectify and enhance our project, which will greatly benefit our home, benefit our family and adding value to our property. This effort include utilizing fire rated materials to increase the project's security to the public and the neighborhood. Also, on the north side, there is no existing presence of any close neighbors, which create as a buffer zone between the two properties. To the east side, we have about forty feet zero inches of distance to the property line. Please, we would like to extend our apologies if we have inconvenienced our neighbors and assure them that we are committed to addressing our errors. Kind regards, Amalia. We have a letter that is signed by a, about seven of our surrounding neighbor of the property that they agree to our project.
If you could hand that to, uh?
Sure.
Mr. Devlin and he'll pass that down. The signatures are on the back of a copy of the letter that was just read into the record and they include signatures from, I believe it's Julie Rosizio, three-eleven Ransford Road. A signature that I wouldn't even begin, it may start with a T, but there's a lot of loops and everything and that is from three oh three, Ransford. Then Carla Mattioli, twelve Ranch Street. Caitlin Hanley and Nick Hanley from two sixty-five Angeles Drive. William J. Dixon, thirty-four Ranch Drive. Tegan Sanani, forty-four Ranch Drive. Any questions or comments from anyone on the board?
I have one question. Are you building a pavilion or pergolo? What is that building you're building?
We, we had submitted a photograph. We call it pavilion. It's not an enclosed structure. It's just like a shed in essence.
It's an open side, right?
It's an open, yes, it is open.
But it has a roof over top?
Yes, yes, sir.
I, I actually had the same question. I did a little research and basically they're all the same.
Can we have a photograph? Is it okay that we pass it along?
Well, I have a copy of it.
Okay.
I have a copy. But other question is, will you have electric in that? You planning on putting electric in there?
No. It's just something we plan to use for my mom. She have five grandkids. It's just to use during the summer, when it's warm, the warm season.
It already exists, doesn't it?
Yes.
I mean, you have, you have a six-foot white fence. I mean, I went by there and I'm familiar with it because my daughter used to live across the street before she went to the army.
Okay.
Okay, but you have a six-foot white fence and you look in there, you can see that the pavilion is there and it is...
Mr. Devlin, is your microphone on?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that better?
That's a little better, yeah, thank you.
Looking at, at the, at the house from the street, it looks like the pavilion is almost right up kissing the, the fence, right up to the side of the fence on your side of the property. Is that correct?
I think that's the gazebo. There's a gazebo and a pavilion.
Yes.
And the pavilion. The fence is so high, you can't really see too well. When you go over there, look.
The pavilion she's talking about is further to the west from the gazebo. The gazebo, according to the survey maps, was moved from being closer to the street to further back. And as I understand it, there was a, a pre-existing shed that was there when you bought the property and that's been torn down?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It is the shed on the other side of the fence that's on the other property? On the other side of the fence, on the north side?
Uh-huh.
There's, there's a shed, but that's not your property, correct?
No.
Good.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, and the gazebo's saying too? The gazebo's gonna stay?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Step right up, sir.
So, uh?
Your name and address, please?
Yes, Nickarcola, twenty-four Ranch Drive. I live directly across from nine Ranch Drive. So this structure is on the, their side yard directly in front of my house. It is...
Actually, I have to correct you on that. According to the town zoning ordinance, it's in their backyard.
Okay.
Because the town, this is a crazy thing and, and it creates confusion all the time for the post office, for delivery people. The corner lot, the shorter distance, which in this case is not the Ranch Drive side, it's the, what is it, Angeles Drive?
Yes.
Side, that is the front yard for the zoning purposes. So their driveway and their front door are on the side yard.
All right.
And their, what you and I would look at and say, oh, that's their side yard, under the zoning ordinance, is their rear yard.
Okay. Well, for, for aesthetic purposes, it's directly in front of my house.
Front of your house.
Very slightly. It was built with, you know, with, without permission. They, correct me if I'm wrong, did create another shed, build another shed on their property?
No, no, it just made a request.
But there, there's a new shed.
All right, the comments are supposed to be directed to the board.
Yeah, so there was a new pre, prefab shed built on their property, I think put on the northwest side. I watched them build it. You know, they already have lots of, you know, gazebo that was mentioned. You know, they've got more outbuildings on their property than grass, it seems, and it's, I don't know. I, I, I'm opposed to the, the project. I don't have a lot of, you know, to stand on, I guess, but...
All right, well, thank you for coming and speaking. We appreciate that. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone, oh, step right up.
My name is Virginia Cumine, C.U.M.I.N.E. Two-two-nine Angeles Drive. Okay, um, I just have a few, some questions. I just wonder why it's painted fire engine red? And I guess the term pavilion suggests that there's gonna be a roof on it, so it's a, a building, a structure, a permanent structure. And maybe they're gonna put sides on it, I don't know. They didn't get permission from the town to build what it's there now, what, what they've been building. And the other thing is that as I, they were building it all summer, that apparently all the soil that was under the foundation or whatever was put onto the lawn. It borders the, all the sidewalk and it's just filled dirt and it's been there for months and it looks ugly and I don't know if there's a resolution to that. And I guess this is just a general question. What is the reason or reasons for, I think it's a five, five-foot setback that you're required? What, what are the reasons for those? I know there's a fire separation from other structures and things, but I, what are the reasons?
In general, the purpose of a setback is to have distance between structures, distance between properties. That's the reason for setbacks, is to create areas of separation. In this case, the fence, I believe, that's on the north side is at the end of the property line. But there's a extensive distance between the fence and the rear of the house that's to the north of the property. So the purpose of an area variance is when there's a practical hardship of complying, we have the authority and under certain, meaning it meets the certain criteria of a practical hardship to say you can be closer to the sideline than that. It's the same concept as what the first applicant was talking about with respect to the breezeway and the zero setback.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this application? Or anyone who wants to address this application that's neither in favor nor opposed? Would the applicant, oh, would the applicant like to address the points that were raised during the public input portion of the hearing? Are you going to interpret for her?
I speak English, but the problem is the people don't understand what I talk. This is the problem in my daughter, but I speak English.
Okay.
So let me answer the question to her. So before around the house, we have a plant, like it's like a fence before, a long time ago, we decide to do the white fence. I take it off all this because anything coming from the doors and everything coming between the, the grass and the, and the bush, and the bush. So I take it off everything. When I pull out the, the root, it get the hole, it get the hole. So this time, when I do the project, so what I did, I tried to fill, they fill the spaces. So I apologize for that because I don't, we don't finish yet because when I started, we start build, we don't, we don't contrast nobody else. So then I asked the people, the, I need the permanent for this and tell me no because I concrete the backyard because the grandchildren want to play. So then somebody come from the fire department and tell me, oh, it's okay, but you need, so I tell her, oh my God, I made a mistake. So I stop it. I stopped the project, I stopped everything until today. So I, I want to, I know what she talking about. It's something like a, we need to, how you say?
Level.
Like a, a level, but it's in the hole where you have before in the house.
Do you need to level the dirt is what you're saying?
Yeah, the door.
Okay.
So I tried to pass the car and pass the car because I really, I know how to, but I know, I apologize, I, I, I fix that. I can fix that and no problem. Respect to do the color. The one other reason I understand, we Spanish people, we like hot color. Imagine when I buy the house, I put the white fence and the root, I, I, I change the roof, the chingles, I put the red chingle. After me, plenty of people in the building do it because it look good, it look more, more... After me, plenty of people in the building do it because it look good, it look more, more, um, modern, modern. We need to be modern, we can be what? So the town get more money, more, more, more people liking more for me, right? So I make it the roof red, eh, red with the chingle red, you know, the red is brown red, something like that. It's like a bridge, brick, um, yes, um, plenty of people do that is. And so what is problem, because I want to preserve the, the wood, the wood from the, for the rim, because I need to wait two months for the meeting today. I decide to buy this car the color, but this color nobody can see because this is, if approved, it, it need to be under the shed. So nobody can see, only me, when I sit down and watch, you understand? So another thing, the highest, when I put for the, eh, I put lower than the gazebo because I want the gazebo, it, it show the nice and beauty for the house. So I always put the, this ranch lower, so it's almost, it's almost four feet. It's almost my side, little, little more than that. I know put more higher than the gazebo, it can be never more higher, so the people, when you watch, the, the same way he said, it's high fence, you can see. Now you see because you pass, maybe you can see a little bit, but the gazebo, the front, yeah, this is the gazebo original, I, I know do that is. Yes, it's highest, so I do lower than the gazebo, so the color, I think in one fit, the color for nobody, but let it, let, um, I don't know, I like red.
Hi, good night, everyone.
Good night.
My name is Sol McCann, I also reside at Nine Ranch Drive, um.
You swear affirm that everything you say will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Okay.
Um, we're from Guyana, South America, so in our country, you do not need permission to build property on your land. So we are not aware that we needed permission, so we apologize for that. Um, my mom, she is a healthcare worker, so she's always working. I have two mothers, both of them in healthcare, and they always working. So whatever time that they have, that was the reason for the pavilion, it's for spend leisure time with the kids and the grandkids and myself. And I have three other sisters and we have a lot of nieces and nephews, so we apologize for that. Um, I think mostly why she pick the red is because my mom love red. So maybe it affects some neighbors, but you know, you do things that make your spouse happy.
We, we don't regulate the colors that people choose to use.
Oh, because we heard it was, I heard it was mentioned, so.
Somebody mentioned that they would prefer that it not be red, but we don't, that's not, the only thing in front of us, right? Is whether it can stay one point nine feet from the fence or the property line, it may not be the fence, but one point nine feet from the property line. Or whether it has to be moved two point one feet closer to the house so that it's four feet from the property line. That's what's in front of us.
I, I understand, but it was mentioned, so I just wanted to say that. But, um, anyways, we are pleading with the board, um, the town of Arondacoit. If you guys can please be lenient regarding this situation, we apologize for whatever error we have made. Um, we can promise you and reassure you that if we are to build anything, we will inquire more about the rules and the regulation regarding the town. So we are really and truly sorry about this and that's all I have to say, so have a great night.
Let me tell you that you're not the first person and I can pretty certain that you won't be the last.
Oh, no, 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 you see.
In front of us because they did something without getting a permit, knowing that, and not knowing they needed it.
Okay, well, I, I, the thing is that Guyanese people, whenever we make a mistake and there is penalty that comes with it, we do not make the mistake again, so.
Those who, uh, learn from history are less likely to repeat it.
Okay, I'll take your word for it. Anyways, have a great night.
Thank you, you too. So we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter.
Next case on the agenda is case number ZB twenty-two-four dash eleven dash O two. Colliers Engineering, acting as agent for Providence Housing. Providence Culver Housing LLC is seeking an area variance to allow for the construction of four multifamily two-story apartment buildings and one three-story apartment building with a height of thirty-nine feet where the height of thirty feet is permitted on premises twenty-five ninety Culver Road in an R-five residential district.
Good evening, uh, Kurt Charlin with Colliers Engineers, we're the civil engineers for the project.
You'd raise your right hand.
Sure.
And the lady with you?
Jessica Wade.
Hi, Jessica Wade from SWBR, we're the architect on the project.
Alright, so if both of you could raise your right hands, if you, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Sure do.
Okay, I thought I'd see Mr. Breisberger tonight.
Mr. Breisberg?
Mark.
Oh, ah, yes, he is sick, I believe.
He had a death in his family.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that, okay.
Yes.
I know he was in front of us several years ago, I think with the project further down.
Yes, our RMI problem.
Yes.
Yes, so, um, Michelle basically said it all. I mean, we are proposing a development, uh, behind the Quickleys, uh, approximately nine point four-five acres. Um, there'll be, uh, five buildings, uh, four smaller units, one larger, uh, multi-story unit, seven, with seventy-two units in it. Associated parking, stormwater, uh, and utilities extended onto the site. We'll be using the signalized intersection for access, um, that's at the Quickleys entrance. Um, there's also a proposed emergency access out to Holda Park. Um, that'll be a gated access, um, to the project site as well, just for emergency access only. Um, and we're, and we're seeking a, uh, variance for thirty-nine, uh, feet where thirty is the code requirement uh, for the larger multi-story seventy-two unit, um, building.
And that building is the one that's gonna be located closest to one oh four and furthest away from the residential property to the south, right?
That is correct, yep. This variance is also, um, as you mentioned with the RMI, it's consistent with the building on that bill, on that site as well. That also received, uh, the same exact variance, uh, for thirty-nine.
Further to the east, right?
Correct, yep.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Step right up, sir.
Don Markham, one fifty-six Heberly Road, uh, deja vu all over again, all the stuff you've been hearing, uh. The project next to it, they, uh, let's just say they, they changed the date for one of the meetings and they snuck it in according to some people, but it was supposed to be people from the neighborhood that could age there, you know, senior living. And then they made it, uh, low income in the first floor. You know, any age group, whatever, I understand. And so it's people that weren't from the neighborhood and people that are, pardon, pardon me, but you know, low income, then usually most people don't want them in their neighborhood. I mean, pardon me for saying that, but, uh, they snuck that in and the woman was talking about trust. And let's just say, me and a lot of people in the neighborhood do not trust the government. Uh, that, I just feel you're gonna sneak this in there, you know, it's the Trojan horse effect.
I take it you're here because you were made aware through some form of notice that this was on our agenda tonight, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and I can, I'll be able to see it out my window, yeah.
Nothing is being snuck in, and I understand you don't trust the government, okay?
From what I've seen, from the past.
Let me assure you, we all reside in the town of Arondacoit, we wouldn't be on the board if we didn't, alright? We are tasked with deciding whether or not there's a practical hardship that would warrant granting an exception, alright? And in this case, we're talking about nine feet for the height of a building that is going to be the furthest north from the residential area that, where I believe your street is and the closest to one oh four, which at that point is elevated above the level that the building would be built on, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And the smaller buildings are the ones that are going to be closer and they're, they're not in front of us because they don't require a variance as to the height.
So you're saying my issue would be the planning board or?
No, no, you're in the right place. But the question is, they wanna build on the north side of the property by one oh four from the ground level up thirty-nine feet high as opposed to thirty. So it's gonna be nine feet taller than what, and that's needed to accommodate three stories and the number of units that can be accommodated in that space. To the south by you, closer to you, is where they're going to have two-story buildings that do not require any height variance because they're within the thirty feet requirement. So we're talking about the building that's going to be furthest away from you, closest to one oh four. And one oh four is already raised above the level of, that they're starting at. So that's, that's what's in front of us. What, we have no control over who they rent to, how big or small the units are. That is not properly in front of us, that is not a consideration that can be taken into account. We're asked to decide whether or not there's a practical hardship that warrants the nine-foot variance that they're requesting. That's what's in front of us.
So traffic don't count?
Traffic is, it, it's relevant? You have an issue with the traffic?
Oh, yeah, it's just gotten worse under the Culver, under the Killers Street Bridge, it's just impossible at five o'clock, I won't even go there, it's unsafe, it's, it's backed up.
Alright.
It's just getting worse because they built over St. Cecilia's, right? They've just built a gas station, they just, there's more apartments around there than there was when I moved in seven years ago.
Yes.
It's getting, gotten ridiculous and I basically go around Bay Road if it's not under construction. But, uh, it looks like the city is moving closer to me and I didn't, I moved out of the city. But let's leave it at that.
We'll leave it at that.
Alright.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you, sir.
Hello. Am I required to state my name and my address?
Name and your address.
My name is Isaiah Christian, I live on eighty-six Heberly. Um, would the necessity of the creation of these buildings be within the purview of what we're talking about here today?
The necessity?
Mm-hmm.
You mean whether they're allowed to build it or not?
Um, yes.
No, because the, the only thing that's in front of us is nine feet.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Looks like there's folks in the back who are deciding. As they say, this is speak now or forever hold your peace.
Yeah, so Casey Miller, nine-six-eight Whitlock Road. Um, I came here when they built the assisted living facility and everything just kept changing, changing, changing. And they really got us dirty with all that. I see that the map over there, it's not the worst thing in the world, but I, I worry that once they get their foot in the door with, uh, three stories on the big building that wasn't on the postcard last time because originally it was four buildings, a hundred and four units, now we got a seventy-two unit addition with, you know, three floors. You know, what happens when they decide they wanna do three floors on all the buildings and who knows what else they wanna do? Uh, you know, ideally, the, the drawing that they have over there is not the worst thing in the world. I, you know, hope that it remains that way, but the assisted living that never became assisted living and the, the things that they did to the neighborhood really suck. So, um, and that new traffic light in front of Quickleys has destruct, it's, it's destroyed our, our, getting onto Culver because people stop there, no one's, you know, leaves a gap for us to pull out of our neighborhoods anymore, which, you know, whatever, it, it, it doesn't have anything to do with them, but oh, there's just apartment, 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 apartment. My little Wegmans is gonna get overrun and, uh, that school is, can't even take in this many new residents in the neighborhood with all these apartments and whatnot. It's just, it's a lot of new, uh, a lot of new neighbors to say, say hi to and whatnot. So I, I, I hope, I hope it works out the way that's on that map, it's not terrible, but I just, I've seen how it changed with that last thing that happened and I just.
The one thing that I can assure you of?
Yep.
Is that the two-story buildings do not turn into three-story buildings without coming back in front of us because three-story buildings exceed thirty feet.
Okay.
That's why they're here is because the one building is going to do that if we approve it. They're not asking for and they don't need a variance for the smaller buildings.
It's just like I said, my, my concern is because last time, every time we came to the town hall, I believe it was different people sitting here, um, you know.
I was here.
Everything was resolved.
Swantini was here.
Everything was resolved when. Behind closed doors and we would come in and things would change or things were, you know, resolved outside of whatever and we just came in and complained and left.
You, you might be interested in attending the planning board meeting when the site plan approval is submitted because at the planning board, they will, they consider things like lighting, landscaping, layout of, of the, uh, site, parking. Uh, all of those things are addressed at the planning board.
Okay, is, is there, is that like on the town hall website that you can find where the meeting will be?
Yes, yeah. Oh, yeah, and they advertise that in the same way that this was advertised.
I, I just know about it because I got a postcard in the mail.
And it was.
They get postcards for the other things.
So it was a yellow postcard?
Uh, the first one I think was pink and then the second one was probably yellow or orange.
Okay, so I, it's color-coded, that's my OCD. Um, everything zoning board is yellow, everything pink is planning board.
Okay.
So that'll, and then, yes, the agenda gets posted on the website as well.
Yeah, because the last time I came here, when I came here, it was the piece of paper said it had been postponed and then I never got an update.
And that's, yes, yes.
Happens sometimes.
That happens. So another, another, another route is just to call, call my office.
Okay.
Um, if you, if you need to, my phone number is right on that, uh, red and, I think it's red and white public hearing sign that's right out front.
Okay.
Okay?
But it's not, it could be a lot worse, I guess, it's just would prefer houses.
Well, you know, um, the, the uses that they're proposing, the buildings are permitted under the code, so.
Alright, well, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Yes, step right up.
Hi, I am Coretta Thompson, I'm also nine-six-eight Whitlock. And, uh, I guess I just have one question. So you said that the, um, height of the buildings is locked in. Is the number of apartments locked in? Um, because one thing that we noted with the most recent addition, uh, the, the one where they built off of Holda, um, was that they didn't have compliance for, um, uh. Part, yeah, parking, thank you. Um, and, uh, and Casey was also actually concerned about just how many people are moving to the neighborhood. Um, as it stands, um, it's, Casey once again mentioned this, it's pretty hard to turn even right off of our little, our little side street. Um, and, uh, the traffic is intense. Um, the road narrows right at essentially the entrance to our street and so you can't make a right, you can't make a left, you, you can't even exit.
Does the road narrow or just the lanes?
The, and so, um, the, the, there is, there are two lanes and one of them has become.
And there used to be four, weren't there?
I don't think there were four.
On Culver?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, both directions.
Two each way, right?
Mm-hmm.
And now there's one?
Yeah, and so now there's one that has become a left only, yeah, which means that traffic backs up significantly.
My understanding is, and anyone who knows that I'm wrong is free to correct me. My understanding is that the county narrowed St. Paul Boulevard, Culver, and Titus and a number of other roads in Arondacoit and elsewhere in the county because they reimburse the town by the number of lanes.
Okay.
And so that we, the town plows. So even though the town will plow from curb to curb, when it went from four lanes to two lanes, the county pays the town half of what they used to pay.
Oh, lovely.
And so it's the county that is narrowing the roads and in my view, which I think you share, increasing congestion.
Oh, it's, it's absolutely awful, yeah.
You, you can take that to the county legislature.
It's just really, it's frightening to imagine what adding more people will do, um, and the mornings are woken up with, through traffic as well, so, yeah.
I understand, but as, as. I understand, but as I mentioned earlier, the only thing that's in front of us is nine feet.
Yeah, alright.
Okay?
Okay, um, and so apartments are locked in.
In, in terms of the number of apartments, that's up to the planning board.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
That'd be part of the site plan.
I just want to confirm that you're absolutely right about the county's approach to cutting down their cost of plowing by narrowing, reducing the number of lanes while not reducing the size.
The excuse they use though was traffic calming.
Pardon?
They used the excuse traffic calming.
Yeah, what they, what they've done to the highways.
And the excuse to go add bicycle lanes to.
Yeah, bicycle lanes.
They actually call it a road diet, so they take four lanes to two. It's traffic calming, as you mentioned. It's not just the county, it's the state.
You can step right up.
Sure.
I don't think there's anyone else here to speak to the hearing, is there? Anyone who wants to talk to us about anything? Alright.
Yeah, so what you're talking about on the roads are, I, I don't know anything about what they pay per lane for plowing and stuff like that, but state and counties are doing road diets. It does traffic calming because four lanes, people are just whipping around, people got to turn, they go fast, they go fifty-five in a forty, they go more faster, so they do road diets that, that traffic calm.
Doing some cases where they have more budget.
They actually do raised curved islands, they do pedestrian crosswalks, things like that, so, um, but the cheapest.
Trees on four forty-one were going to slow down the traffic.
The cheapest way to do it is just to restripe the lanes, which is what they've done on many of the roadways. Um, so to, to answer one, the one question, the units are locked in in the site plan. Nobody's going to pull the wool out on this one. This project's been planned a couple of times. It is in the brownfield program, so there is a lot of logistics on how we've positioned the building, where we've reduced the number of buildings, you know, and so we have one larger unit building in, in an area where we don't have to do as much cut or fill into some bad soils, things like that. Um, so tho- those things are very locked in for this project. Uh, there's a lot of financial, uh, assistance that's tied into how we've positioned the building, the number of units that are on the site and whatnot, so, um, we're not, we're definitely not looking to change. The biggest change that we've had on the project since we submitted initially to the planning board is we now have the ability to reduce a lot of fill. We were actually bringing the site up quite a bit just for stormwater purposes, to be able to handle it on the site. We've now found some connections to some storm sewers and things that are beneficial to the project site and to the community, and we can lower the site to where it's almost at the existing grade where we don't have to bring the site up. So that's beneficial as well. So not only are we, we were originally coming in with the site plan, we were asking for about nine-foot height, but we're dropping the whole site about six feet, I think. We're still kind of in the process, but, so everything will kind of be a lot lower as well. Um, so we've done some really nice perspective views, which were actually done when the site was going to be filled, so when we, we get the site to where we are going to ultimately have it, we're going to redo those and you'll notice that the existing trees and the, and the proposed trees are probably going to do a great job of completely eliminating the view shed, uh, for the most part, most of, most of the year, um, from the community to that, to that property.
Especially to the three-story building.
Right, right. Alright.
That's all I got.
Alright, thank you. We'll close the hearing with respect to this matter, move on to the next item on the agenda.
Next item is case number ZB twenty-twenty-four dash eleven dash O three. Michael Nolan of I-Square seeking an area variance for the construction of four duplex senior cottages exceeding maximum permitted area devoted to driveway and parking on premises forty-one, fifty-one, and sixty-one Lorraine Drive in the mixed-use commercial district.
Good evening, Board. Mike Nolan, I-Square offices now at five hundred Bakers Park.
If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So we are seeking a variance to reduce the area dedicated for lawn or in the front yards of the, um, expansion of Brookside cottages. We're building four more duplexes. Um, and there's a code, I'm not sure it's completely relevant in mixed-use commercial or in multifamily development because the code is, does not fall under a certain section of it like in mixed-use, um, but the code reads that, um, the area, the driveway or parking area cannot exceed thirty-five percent of the required front yard. Um, as you may know, probably know, in mixed-use commercial, there's a zero front setback. So the, I thought of having a required front yard in an area that also has zero front setback doesn't necessarily align, uh, but it was, um, required of us to, to come here seeking a variance to reduce the area dedicated for, or increase the area dedicated for driveway and parking space from thirty-five percent to fifty-eight percent.
Am I correct that you want to do since?
That you want to do pretty much the same thing that you've done across the street?
Yes.
With the other duplexes that are there?
Yes.
The driveways in the front, small little yard?
Yes, so it's, um, basically, um, a driveway like a, a primary drive with little T individual driveways off them to each unit, and that's the same way we've designed, um, the ones here.
So it's basically a continuation of what you've already done?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, you're working with DPW about reducing the size of the cul-de-sac?
Yes, that is correct. The cul-de-sac right away is, um, a bit oversized, um, and we've been working with Commissioner McGee, um, potentially reducing that because, um, um, to, um, assist with it, that'll actually better our numbers and as far as this percentage because it would give more space that we can take credit for as front yard. Um, but, uh, that is not done yet, so we would, uh, request the, uh, variance, um, to no more than fifty-eight percent of the front yard dedicated to our driveway and parking.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I got, just for my edification, why do you want to do this rather than just running the driveway straight out to the road?
Um, primarily the way it looks, um, by having a twenty-four, you know, twenty-some foot wide driveway every twenty-four feet, you end up with these little strips of yard and long driveways. Um, in addition, it gives a kind of a sense of place. If you pull off the primary road and into a private driveway, it kind of gives that a little bit of a secluded feel, which is something our seniors, um, tend to really appreciate about the existing Brookside cottages. Um, but we did explore that in a number of different configurations to find what, what met that good balance of, of safety, security, and a sense of place.
Who, who's going to maintain, you got to, is there?
We do it internally. We have, um, employees that maintain the entire site, ours.
Because you operate it?
Yes, we operate it and we take care of ours and House Guitars properties.
More of the grass on each side of it and all that?
Yes.
Alright, I'm good.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a curiosity question, which has nothing to do with this particular request, but when I look at the height of the roof, I'm wondering, and I don't see in the plan, is that a second story up there?
No, it's, um, the apartments each have nine-foot tall ceilings, but a rather high ridge line, um, it's really just for aesthetics. There's nothing up there but insulation and...
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about front yards or where you put driveways or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next case.
Next case on the agenda is case number ZB twenty-twenty-four dash eleven dash O four. Costage Engineering acting as agent for Peace of Christ, Peace of Christ Parish, St. Ambrose is seeking an area variance for off-street parking to allow four spaces where twenty spaces are required by town code on premises fifty-five dash sixty-one Waldo Avenue in an R-two residential district.
Good evening, Ray Ramandi from Costage Engineering here as agent for St. Ambrose Church.
Raise your right hand, um, can you give us the address of Costage Engineer? Your address?
Two-seventeen Lake Avenue.
Okay. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, St. Ambrose has, uh, just to give you a quick background, had decided to, uh, subdivide a couple pieces of property that used to be the convent area. Um, those properties have been combined into one, um, parcel now, the three that were existing. There was never any parking on those facilities. Uh, they had previously used the church parking lot. Um, today we are requesting, uh, the variance for four parking spaces, which are going to be put in the back of the convent in place of twenty that are required. Now, in addition to that, the church has, is granting a, uh, access easement along the side of the property, which is part of their parking lot, and that area can potentially park eight additional vehicles, so the site itself will have twelve available parking spots. Um, the potential buyer, which hasn't been finalized yet, but the potential buyer is, is a non-for-profit program called the Margaret Home. They have a facility in East Rochester, so it's been there for over ten years, so they're quite familiar with the demands and the requirements. Most of their, um, patients or tenants, whatever you want to call them, um, do not have vehicles. Most of them are homeless or in need of, of, uh, they're pregnant women, uh, with children and, uh, needing a place to live and be cared for. They're educated, they're given social work and stuff like that, so, um, this, based on their needs, they will have two full-time employees during the day and one in the evening. They have never required more than three or four parking spaces, but the church, like I said, is entering into a parking agreement with them specifically to use their lot. So, uh, in addition to that, we did not want to start change, uh, for site plan. Some of the neighboring properties were kind of opposed to us doing anything, uh, with the parking area. There is room for a parking area, so we have land-banked, and I know from the previous, we've land-banked sixteen spaces to confirm to the twenty. Um, that in the event that this company does sell that property in the future, uh, there is the ability to, uh, install those parking spaces. We have no intention of doing it now. Um, outside of that, I can answer any of your questions.
So you can help me understand more about this banking?
Land banking?
These sixteen spaces that are kind of shown on the south side, they're not going to be there now or for the foreseeable future, but sometime down the road, they might be put there.
Correct. In the event that the church, uh, in the event that, I mean, the church is planning on being there for some time, in the event that the, um, Margaret Home wants to sell that property to a non-for-profit, a, a profitable, let's say, an apartment building, um, that would require those sixteen pace, spaces to be installed because the church would not honor the agreement of using their parking lot with a group that is not in a non-for-profit program.
Alright, so it's a specific agreement with non-for-profits?
Correct.
Okay. And, alright. I understand, I think. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about parking, not-for-profits, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. I believe that was the last case on our agenda for this evening, so it is now nine forty-three. We'll be in recess until ten o'clock. Dirty on the last day, uh, I've given them until the fifteenth of November to put in anything, so that will give us two or three weeks to go pour through all of the materials that we've been given. This is what I have so far, uh, and then what the applicant submitted on the fifteenth or, or on the twenty-fifth, and, uh, then what we get on the fifteenth, so, um, is there a second?
Second.
Alright. Any discussion?
Third and fourth.
Hmm?
Second, third, and fourth.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention, uh, Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Motion carries, six votes in favor. No, no opposed, one abstention. We have a full board this evening. Two forty-St. Joseph Street and two forty-six St. Joseph Street is the applicant still present?
No.
I don't believe so. Then we have, uh, Nine Ranch Drive. That applicant is still present. And we have, um, twenty-five ninety Culver Road. Yes, they're still present. Uh, forty-one, fifty-one, and sixty-one Lorraine Drive is still present, and fifty-five, sixty-one Waldo Avenue is also still present. So with respect to the application pertaining to Nine Ranch Drive, this is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? I'll make a motion that we grant the variance as requested based on the following findings. This is not going to result in any change in the character of the neighborhood. It's an accessory use to a residential property. Uh, the alternatives that do not require a variance would require, um, moving the concrete, removing two-point-one feet of the concrete and then adding two-point-one feet on the south side of it, or, um, moving the, just cutting off and moving it two-point-one feet. There is ample distance between, uh, the fence and the neighbor to the north. Uh, it is not a substantial request, given the fact that it is enclosed within a six-foot fence and the, uh, neighbor to the north, their property is at least thirty feet, if not, and I think it's much more away, so there's not, uh, a crowding, uh, effect by granting this. There will be no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. Uh, it's not, it's self-created to the extent that they didn't ask for a permit and find out that the old structure wasn't in conformity with the code. It's possible the old structure was built before the code put in the four-foot requirement, but in any event, um, even if it is regarded as self-created, it's, it's not sufficient to preclude. And with respect to, um, the color, that's entirely up to the owner, what color, uh, to do it, and, uh, I just would note that from my viewing, I couldn't really see it from the road, so. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Uh, one member of the board is absent, but our alternate member is present, so we are fully constituted. Uh, one member of the board is absent, but our alternate member is present, so we are fully constituted. Next application pertains to twenty-five ninety Culver Road. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make an, uh, motion with?
I make a motion that we accept this.
Okay, Mr. Evans, thank you.
Yes, um, I make a motion because it's a positive change to the neighborhood, it's not a negative to the neighborhood. It's a continuation of the, the growth that's going on in that area. Uh, there's no alternatives, uh, request is, is substantial. Uh, the physical, the environment is a positive for this, for that area. Uh, I'm familiar with that area, in fact, it's in, almost in my backyard. Uh, there's no, um, they didn't create any negative, uh, problems in that area, so I suggest that we approve this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board is absent, but our alternate member is present, so we continue to be fully constituted. Uh, the next item is the application pertaining to forty-one, fifty-one, and sixty-one Lorraine Drive. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we grant the, uh, request by the applicant, based on the following findings of fact. It's not a substantial request, uh, as far as, um, environmental, uh, there's no environmental impact. Uh, it is self-created, but it's just in conformity with the other, um, the other cottages that have already been built, and as far as the change of the char, character of the neighborhood, it is in, like I said, uh, in conformity with the other Brookside cottages and, um, based on those fa, uh, followings of fact, and some of the other pieces of work Mr. and Mrs., uh, Nolan have done, um, it is a positive, uh, change to the neighborhood.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board is absent, but our alternate member is present, so we remain fully constituted. Next item is the application pertaining to fifty-five, sixty-one Waldo Avenue. This is also a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we accept the application, based on the following findings of fact. Uh, no real change in the neighborhood character, those spaces are already there behind the building as it is. Uh, alternative solutions, they could have no parking at all, or they could use the church parking, there's plenty of parking there. It's a substantial, uh, I would say not really. And environmental impacts, none. Again, those spaces are already there, and it's self-created, yes, but they need, the staff that will be working there will need spaces to park, and of course, any other tenants that will be residing there.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I got a question.
Yes.
Will you put anything in there that they case the property sold, and they gotta have the other sixteen spaces put in?
Well, the, the, the application is to allow them to use the four existing spaces and these sixteen banked spaces that are shown on the thing. As I understand it, that gives a future owner the ability to develop those sixteen spaces to be used. But according to the information that we were given, that doesn't come into play unless and until it's sold to a not-for-profit.
Yep.
Or to a for-profit. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board is absent, but our alternate member is present, so we continue to be fully constituted. The last application for consideration tonight pertains to two forty and two forty-six St. Joseph Street. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we grant the request, uh, based on the following findings of fact. Uh, neighborhood character, uh, based on the question that Chair, uh, Chairman, uh, Himmern asked, the property will virtually stay exactly the same, and we'll just, um, shift lines on a map. As far as alternative solutions, um, there's not, not, uh, any that, uh, there's really no alternative solutions for the, uh, the variance. It's not a substantial request, and, um, based on what the map looks like, and from what I've seen on the map, it's just going to, uh, add an additional part of their property, uh, at two forty and two forty-six. It is self-created in the fact that they want the variance, but, um, doesn't, it's not necessarily gonna, uh, the self-creation shouldn't preclude the area variance, and it's not gonna pose any environmental impact on the two parcels. And for those reasons, I suggest that we grant the request.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board remains absent, however, the alternate member is present, and therefore, we continue to be fully constituted. We have one other item to address, uh, at the October meeting. In advance of that, we'd all received, uh, copies of the minutes from the July first meeting. Uh, last month, we didn't have enough, uh, members who were present on July first present to approve them. However, tonight, I believe, uh, Mr. Devlin, myself, Mr. Angler, Mr. Evans, and Mr. Travis were all present on July first, so those would be the five who would be able to approve the minutes. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the July first meeting as presented.
I'll second those.
Second by Mr. Travis. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The abstentions would be Mr. Intini and Mr. Ubsen, who were not present at the meeting, and Mr. Johnson is not present tonight, so those are approved. Is there any other business to come before the, uh, board this evening? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions. That motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, the absent member didn't participate. We are adjourned.